There we are. There we are. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call to order tonight's township of Bernards zoning board of adjustment. The first item on the agenda is the flex. So please stand if you can.
United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirement of the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting of the board of adjustment of the township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. It was also mailed to the Bernardsville News, Whipping in New Jersey, the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, and it was also filed with the township clerk on January 9th of this year and was mailed electronically to all those people who had requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. There will be no new cases heard after 10 o'clock tonight and no new testimony heard after 10:30 tonight. Ms. Kiefer, can you do the roll call, please?
Certainly. Chairwoman Juniors.
Here.
Mr. Argwall.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Ms. Pedici.
Here.
Ms. Paktar.
Here.
Ms. Silver.
Here.
Mr. Sobieski.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Schlein.
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the appointment for a vice chairperson for 2025. As most people know, Mr. Tancredi took a position fulfilling a seat on the township committee, which leaves open. Yes, he did. Okay. There you go. Well, for those who did not know. For those who did not know. So that leaves open our seat for vice chairperson. So if I could ask for a motion for a nomination for a vice chairperson for our committee?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Lisa Baumann as vice chairperson.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I'd like to second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Ms. Kiefer?
All right. We do this as a voice vote?
Are there any other nominations? All right, close nominations.
Close nominations.
I do a roll call just to be sure.
All right. Dr. Argwall.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes. Sure.
Mr. Kraus.
Do I have to say it?
Ms. Pedici.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Baumann. Thanks for doing that. Thank you for doing that for us. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. First one up is 6A, which is the November 14th, 2024. I think everyone got a copy in advance. If there's any comments or edits on that, otherwise a motion to approve as drafted.
All right, Madam Chair, it is just you and Mr. Kraus.
Okay. You have a call.
I will motion.
And I will second to approve as drafted.
Approve as drafted. No changes.
Okay. Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that one was easy. The second one is the approval of minutes from our December 4th regular session meeting. Also, those minutes were circulated in advance. If there's any comments or edits, otherwise a motion to approve as drafted.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
Now, in this case, Madam Chair, you are eligible. Ms. Baumann, Mr. Kraus, and Ms. Paktar are eligible. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And those that I mentioned are abstaining.
I just wanted to check. I was here for part of that meeting. Am I okay to approve the minutes?
I'm probably.
I didn't say anything either way.
Probably abstain.
So I abstain.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of resolutions. The first one is the Caputo Resolution, ZB 24017. That was also circulated in advance of today's meeting. Are there any comments or edits on that or motions?
And Madam Chair, on this one, you are eligible. Let's see. Ms. Baumann, Mr. Kraus, Ms. Pedici.
I make a motion to approve the minute, pardon me, approve the resolution as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Pedici.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Pedici.
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. The next one is from our December meeting, which was Healy, ZB 24021. I think I am abstaining from that one.
All right, yes. And we have Ms. Baumann, Mr. Kraus, and Ms. Paktar, who are eligible.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Paktar.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is also from our December meeting, which was the Hessels Application, ZB 24020.
Okay, and the same three are eligible?
Same group for that one.
I have a quick question on that one.
Yes.
In this particular one, the applicant, the applicant had mentioned that they would remove the shed to meet the impervious coverage number that we had agreed upon. There's a language in the resolution that covers whether they keep the shed or whether they remove the shed. So language-wise, we're covered either way, but because they specified the shed at the meeting, does the board care if they were to keep or remove?
I guess the question is, was, when you voted to approve the application, was it conditioned upon that shed specifically being removed or just that the shed could be one of the things that would be removed?
I think I actually wrote that up during a discussion that does the board care if it's actually the shed? Because they repeated and said they're going to remove the shed, and I got the sense that the board didn't really care. It was more of a coverage thing.
Right.
I think that's kind of the way it happened.
Yeah, I think it was that. That's typically what we do, but because they had mentioned it and there was language both ways, I just figured I'd bring it up.
They definitely got to at least move it.
Yeah.
But they don't have to remove the property and make it part of coverage.
Okay. Ms. Sobieski, is that sufficiently covered in the resolution?
Yeah, so that's comment, or I'm sorry, condition number five on page 15, if you want to refer to that. It states, "The applicant shall revise the submitted plans to show proposed lot coverage ratio not exceeding 23.95%, which may be accomplished by removing existing stepping stones, removing the existing rear yard shed, and/or removing other existing or proposed impervious surfaces from the property." So a pretty wide net to get down to 23.95.
And it's sufficiently covered in the resolution that if they don't remove the shed, they have to move it?
Yes. So on page 14, I believe that references, Dave's comments reference there. Yeah, so item number five, should the applicant not fully remove the existing shed from the property, the shed shall be relocated.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann. Is there any motion?
So if everybody's okay with it, then I would make a motion to approve as drafted.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Paktar, Mr. Kraus. I mean, Ms. Baumann and Mr. Kraus.
All righty. Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is 7D, the Brady Application, also from December, ZB 24015. Any comments or edits on this resolution or a motion to approve as drafted?
Same three are eligible.
Same group.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted. I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann and Ms. Paktar.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of resolutions for signature acquisitions, ZB 22028. I think Mr. Kraus and me. It was circulated in advance, thank God. It was like 100 pages.
Do you want to read that right now? I mean, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, we needed some, we needed some time.
I saved the tree and did double side.
There you go. There you go. So do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as drafted.
Okay. I will second, I will second that.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors.
Yes. I'd like to thank Mr. Sobieski and his team. Did a great job on that. That was a lot of work, I know.
Yeah.
Was that the resolution? It was a lot. Holy cow. It was almost 100 pages.
Ninety-two. Ninety-two.
Next on the agenda is the approval of Resolution 7F, which was the Grimshaw-Ox Resolution, ZB 24022. I think that was from January, so I think you have a different group.
Right, and I believe everybody is eligible with the exception of Ms. Silver. We had seven people available and she was our alternate.
Great, thank you. So this was circulated in advance. If there's any comments or edits, now's the time to voice them, otherwise we'd like a motion to approve as drafted.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Let's see. Dr. Argwall.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Pedici.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Chairwoman Juniors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now that that works out of the way, we're going to move on to completeness in public hearing, 8A. We're going to welcome back the Gruber Application, which was carried from our January 8th meeting.
Madam Chair, while the applicant's counsel is approaching, I'll just point out for the record, the board continues to have jurisdiction. Notices go to the first place. We carried it to January 8th by voice announcement, and then we carried it again to this evening by voice announcement, so the board still has jurisdiction here to decide the case, in my legal opinion.
Thank you. And I think, Mr. Zelli, we have had Ms. Silver and Mr. Argwall watch the videos. And Ms. Paktar. Oh, for one of them. That's right. So I think we're in a position to.
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair. In my legal opinion, I, they did certify to me that they reviewed the tapes, so I believe we have a fully qualified seven-member board to act on this application.
Excellent. And I think, Mr. Zelli, you gave us some amended language.
I did, and I have hard copies of that for each of you. Pass those out.
Is this exactly the same that we received?
This is exactly what was emailed today.
Okay. And this is what we have, simply right?
This is what we have from the.
Does everybody have this from today? If you don't, we'll take another copy. Otherwise.
Mr. Zelli, I think we'll just mark this as an exhibit, just to be clear. I think it's, would this be exhibit 81?
I have.
I don't think we have an exhibit on this app.
And just for clarification, this is amended language on the deed restriction. Is that right, Mr. Zelli?
Anybody else?
No. We have it.
This is exhibit 81, amended deed restriction language dated today. It's February 5th, 2025.
Are you marking the red line and the clean separately or just as one?
Oh, you get this too?
Yeah.
Okay, so the red line will be exhibit 81, red line, red line amended deed restriction language, and then exhibit 82 will be the clean one.
I think we have 81 already from the first version.
Oh, was that an exhibit?
I think it was.
We, yeah, that would make sense that we would have done. I don't remember, but that makes sense. All right, so red line will be A2 and then A3?
Right. Sounds good.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks. Good catch there, Dave. Appreciate that.
Mr. Zelli, do you want to take us through that amended language?
I can do that. So I'll refer to A2. Hopefully the redlining is not confusing. The changes were made in accordance with comments that were made at the last hearing. Also tried to simplify it as much as possible, which lawyers say all the time, and we know that's a lie, but we try our best. So first numbered paragraph is unchanged. Basically just confirming that this apartment that's, that the subject of this application would be the only apartment on the property, would not be in addition to, for instance, an inner house apartment that would otherwise be permitted under the zoning ordinance. Number two, really just modified in accordance with Mr. Schlein's suggestion at the last meeting, really just to simplify that paragraph. Number three, changes pursuant to comments made by the board, just addressing the parking and really, again, just clarifying the status of the parking on the property. Number four, separate changing from home to house, which is a typographical change. At the end, as you know, presently, the property is owned by a family trust, and I had listed out several different possible legal entities. I just changed it just to make it or a legal entity. The same concept being, though, that the principals would have to be people owning controlling interest in those legal entities. And then on to the second page. Number five, I think there was some concern that 180 days was an awfully long period of time, that this use might not be allowed. I just shortened it to 90 days. The thought of that being if there were going to be a change in ownership, but one that would still be able to use this variance, so to speak. I thought 90 days would be necessary just for that change in ownership to take place. Typically, it's a two- to three-month closing period these days. Anything shorter than that could get tripped up by a longer closing period. Number six, not changed at all. Number seven was taken out altogether, and then number eight was just a change in numbering. So I'm happy to recap if anybody would like me to, and if anyone thinks they've heard enough of me, I'm happy to be quiet, and I know there's a bunch of people after me tonight.
Mr. Zelli, do we maybe want to confirm which conditions of section 21-12.3H we're deviating from?
Absolutely. So condition number one, which is that the apartment in question has to be inside the physical home. Obviously, we don't have that here. We have what's typically called a carriage house apartment or apartment above a detached garage. And then condition number six, dealing with the familiar relationship between the occupants of the apartment and the occupants of the main home. Typically, the concept is that there's a relationship between those in the apartment and the people living in the main home. In this case, it's a deviation. We have a familiar relationship between the person living in the apartment, namely the owner's son, and the owners, but the owners do not live in the home. It's a separate unrelated tenant in the home. So those are the two conditions, making this a D3.
I also, I might be getting a little too technical. I noted condition number two, no more than 25% of the floor area, the principal building to be used for the apartment.
And that is true, and one of our conditions for the deed restriction, number two, takes care of that.
With that one. Or you're good with five?
Because I believe, off the top of my head, I think it's 19 points something we came up with. So it's already below 25.
Right. Five was the FHA requirement, but I think we kind of came to the understanding that that's moot at this point because the FHA doesn't really apply to anything here.
Correct. Right.
So that's.
We need a lot of the building codes, it's typically what we throw in there instead.
And that's fine. Obviously, there's no construction going on here, so whatever's there is there in that sense. And there, just to recap, there were variances granted historically for this particular apartment, so it's not like it was built under the radar or something like that. It was built with knowledge, at least ultimately, long before my clients owned the property.
Then condition number seven, I think you're, that's when it becomes no longer occupied. I think you were deviating from that to, for 90 days.
Does condition number seven have, I don't know if it has one unless it just says period.
I think it just says at such time.
It's as soon as, yeah, as soon as the, as the relationship ends and terminates, but then what you're suggesting with the deed restriction is to give up the 90-day window. So I think that's still a deviation.
I don't object to that interpretation. I don't think we've even discussed it before, but. That's no problem.
And then number eight, to the extent that this would be kind of a different process, I think that you're mostly complying with that, but it's, to the extent that it's not the exact same, you know, conditional use requirements of the ordinance, you know, you're not certifying that you can comply with the conditional use requirements, you're certifying that you comply with the requirements.
Disapproval.
Right. So that's, at least to an extent, a deviation.
I have no objection to amending or if there's a revolution granting to include it that way. It's fine. Both of those is fine.
Any resolution accurately captures it. And then as far as conditions go, I know that obviously all this deed restriction stuff would apply. You guys would be complying with all building codes. Just go back to my notes. I think there might have been one or two other conditions that might actually be captured by the deed restrictions.
Yeah, I think we've captured everything that there is.
We're the sewage authority. I think you agreed.
Oh, yeah, sewage authority. Yeah, yeah, I see that one. That was on Dave's memo.
Was that needed even though it's already in existence?
Well, I'm sure that it's registered with them and the fees being paid to them.
Oh, okay. I don't recall that, but no objection. That's fine.
It was a comment in my memo.
Oh, so that'd be covered by the standard? That we agree in your memo? That's fine. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Quinn had any comment or conditions in his memo. So, okay, I think that's really about it.
I have just a couple of minor questions.
Yeah, please. Yes, please.
In number four, where it says occupant, and then in the third line, together with their respective spouses and children, I think that should say spouse or child since only two people are allowed to be in the building?
Can I jump on your question? Are you saying that two people can be there per our ordinance as far as apartments go or per the deed restriction?
Per the deed restriction.
So I have an issue with there being two people allowed in the apartment. We went from one person in a non-conforming use, not really belonging there, to now two people being allowed there. So I would prefer to strike that altogether.
So that. Does it, does the ordinance actually limit it to one person?
No, I think Ms. Baumann's point is that our current situation, obviously giving rise to this application, involves one person who's unmarried.
I have a question about the last point in here, where it says the five calendar years. Are we saying that in that section, that no one can occupy the apartment after five years' time, or just that this non-conforming use of the apartment can exist after five years?
So the apartment itself is non-conforming? So the answer is yes, to either way. So, yeah, so after five years, it would not be able to be used as an apartment, have to be converted to storage or workshop or something other than a dwelling unit?
Unless someone was to come in and get another bill of approval, of course.
Right.
While we're on that one, the word calendar years, does that mean anything different in this case than years?
No, it's just lawyer speak.
Will we give it a calendar? We don't use that term.
Sure.
Other of our time limitations and it would be confusing.
No problem.
You get paid by the word.
Can we also reduce that?
I do, never mind. I'll leave that there.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, is anyone else a little uncomfortable with it being five years? Seems long.
So I was not in the first hearing, and I went through the recording and everything, and I think there was some mention of two years, that two years would be long enough. My only concern is that, you know, this part at five years, and it actually allows you that after five years, you come back and again request approval. And what we are putting here actually is potentially perpetual use of this apartment in this way, which really sets a bad example for the township, for somebody else that, you know. I understand it's hardship, but hardship should not continue for five years. One year. I think maximum one year is a long enough time for somebody to find, you know, deal with the hardship, and we comply with the laws.
And I don't think there's a hardship. I think someone bought a house.
Okay.
That's another concern that, that's another concern that when the house was purchased and there was some kind of disclosure that they don't know about the thing, that what is the, whether it's allowed or not. Now, I think the attorneys involved should have done their due diligence, you know, come to the town, that, you know, hey, this is, what is this? Do we need to get an approval? What is the story here? So that part was not there, but I think, yes, you know, we're okay with the hardship, but five years is too long. I think one year is good enough. We should not make this a perpetual thing that, you know, it will stay forever. Or it comes back, or even the language saying that, you know, permitted of the future action, you know, the language should be that we are giving you this approval for one year, after one-year period this is done.
What does everyone think about the timeframe? I'm not tied to the one, but I think five is too long, in my opinion.
And the applicant was informed that the real estate transaction, Mr. Zelli, right? The prior owner did say that there was a conditional use on this.
No, the disclosure was.
What was the disclosure?
Simply that they were not going to make any representations as to the legality of the apartment.
Well, when I, when I saw the video, I heard the homeowner say that he was informed by a code official, but he didn't say what code official and why that code official was alerted.
I think that was the tax official, but it was after the fact. That's why we're here, because.
That's the person that I know, but he just said code official.
The tax official advised Ms. Keteritz.
Okay.
And then.
Sorry, the video was very difficult to hear.
Yeah.
But if the seller is saying that there's no representation, that's ground enough for the buyer to do their own diligence, because there's the apartment behind the building. That's not very common, to see if they're really permitted or there's some other story with that, which will cause the hardship. Because right now, right now, the way I see it is.
Didn't visit for an assessment.
Which is rented and this is, you're still using, I mean, manhouse, the apartment should have gone with the manhouse.
Okay.
So, Mr. Zelli, I think you've heard some feedback from the board. Is there any other further stipulations you want to offer?
Without having to go out into the hallway and take some additional time, I have some leeway on that, only because we discussed it at the first meeting. Second, yeah, first meeting. So, I know I have authority to get down to three. I don't have authority for under that, so.
Okay.
But if the board could, if the board could live with three, I think we'd be all right.
There's also a question from Ms. Bellman about the number of people in the apartment. Do you want to opine on that suggestion, or do you want to leave it as is?
The reason we had it for number two is simply so that if he should be involved in a serious relationship, and have somebody move in with him, we didn't want to preclude that. I could argue that that sort of goes against some of the, or is consistent with case law of preserving and not interfering with personal relationships and whatnot. If it's something the board is very concerned about, it's probably not the end of the world, but we did want to make sure it wasn't going to turn to a family or something like that. That's why we left it to just two.
Are there additional questions for Mr. Zelli?
So, I would ask, like, how long before something becomes to the point where, you know, it could be used in case law against us, and say, well, it's been existing for so long, now...
That's not a thing.
Yeah, the variance keeps that from happening.
Yeah, that's not a thing.
It's conditioned on a three-year termination period, so at that point, it's, it's what we have, I agree with him, Mr. Zelli.
And I think that number six, saying annual certification, you know, if you don't give more than one year, then the point is, that clause is not limited.
If it were only one year, that would be true.
So, I, I kind of feel like this is going against the intent of our master plan.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we, I want to kind of separate, separate, like voting and deliberations. Are there any other questions for Mr. Zelli, based upon, are there any questions from the public based upon the new testimony that we've heard tonight on this case?
That's, representations, for...
Okay, I'm sorry, representations.
Don't know, I think Mr. Zelli says that.
Not a lawyer, okay. Okay. Mr. Zelli, anything else from us?
No, I think I actually went over the planning aspects of it at the end of the last meeting, so just very quickly, I'd point out that this is a D three, not a D one. So, all we need to prove is that the site can accommodate any harms that might be envisioned by the conditions having been set, and that we would not violate those harms, so to speak, by having these variances to the conditional use granted. As you know, this apartment has in fact been used for many years, albeit pursuant to a specific prior variance. There's been no evidence, no testimony, no neighbors complaining of any problems arising from it, so I think the property's history in and of itself shows that the site can accommodate it. So, we believe we satisfied the positive criterion, and again, the negative criteria, there's really, there's been no problem, there's been no detriment, and given the fact that you would be limiting it by time, that makes it even unlikely, less likely that there would be such a problem. So, I think we've satisfied both the positive and negative for a D three. We thank you for your time, three times now, and appreciate a positive vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zelli. Is there anyone from the public who wants to make a comment on this application?
Title Stein Riverside Drive.
Thank you very much. Do you swear affirm the testimony? You're about to provide to me the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Usually, the board is very tough on the part, you know, garages, and the concerns of them being furnished and becoming apartments. And I know there was language in the last meeting talking about only cars are going to be parked in the garage, the two-car garage, I think it was?
It is.
So, I'd like to see some type of language saying that no improvements can be done underneath here, as no bathrooms, no kitchens, no spare room, so that one day, someone decides to close the doors, and then all of a sudden, it becomes another house in there. And I'd like to make sure that's said, not just, you know, we, the old, we just have storage of boxes, because those boxes turn into apartments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other comments on this application? Okay. Mr. Zelli, over to us. Is that right?
Yeah, I'll just briefly address that. I think that is covered, at least implicitly, by number three in the deed restriction, but if the board shares that concern, I would have no problem with any language, either in the resolution and/or the deed restriction, that the garage cannot be used for anything other than garage space.
And maybe also number two, in, in terms of the floor area of the apartment, would not be increased?
Correct, yeah, that's true.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this application? Do you have any, some of what we're looking for here? I guess it's a D three.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Yes, so we're looking at a D three conditional use variance here. Mr. Zelli, I was kind enough to go through the various points from which they're deviating from, this is section twenty-one dash twelve point three, H of the ordinance, which pertains to accessory apartments. They're deviating from condition one, the number of apartments within a single-family residence shall be limited to one, and shall be located within the principal dwelling. The accessory apartment is situated within the detached garage on the second floor, not within the principal dwelling, so that's the first one they're deviating from. The other condition, the next condition, do you want to throw all these?
Yeah, well, sure.
Okay, okay. The second condition is that, is that not more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of, of the principal building may be used for the apartment. They're proposing to deviate from this condition to the extent required, due to the fact that the apartment at issue isn't within the principal building, and they've offered that the floor area of that apartment won't be increased, or it won't be occupied by more than, I think, one person. Was that the stipulation, Mr. Zelli?
It, it was raised. I don't know what the end result is.
We'll come back to that, but that's, yeah, we'll come back. Condition three, they're complying with, that's that the applicant shall demonstrate that adequate off-street parking is available through the combination of the principal residential use and the apartment, and they've offered a deed restriction to ensure that adequate parking will continue to exist. Condition number four, the exterior appearance of the principal structure shall not be substantially changed, or I'm sorry, altered in its appearance as a single-family apartment, let me restart that from the beginning. The exterior appearance of the principal structure shall not be substantially altered towards appearance as a single-family residence changed. They're not proposing any changes to the principal dwelling at all here. Condition five, that's that the minimum size of the apartment shall conform to FHA minimum unit size requirements by bedroom count. FHA doesn't apply anymore, but they did offer a condition that they would comply with all applicable building codes, so that kind of covers the intent of that. Six, the occupants of the apartment shall be limited to the mother, father, son, daughter, brother, sister, grandparent, and/or grandchild, together with their respective spouses and children, of one of the principal occupants of the single-family residence. The issue here is that the occupant of this apartment would be the son of the, of the, the party's having an ownership interest in, or a controlling interest in the trust that owns the property. It's a little, somewhat complicated there, and they offered a deed restriction to ensure that that would be, that any, anyone occupying the apartment would have to be related to somebody, either who's an occupant of, of the principal dwelling, or somebody holding a fifty percent or greater ownership interest in the property, or an individual personally holding a controlling interest in a trust or legal entity owning the property. Condition seven, that condition requires that at such time as the apartment becomes unoccupied, or at such time as the occupants of the apartment do not, or no longer bear the requisite relationship by blood or marriage to a principal occupant of the single-family residence pursuant to another section of the ordinance, the conditional use approval shall terminate. In the event that the ownership of the premises changes, there shall be a goddamn presumption that such requisite relationship no longer exists, and this is where they, they're asking for an extension of ninety days upon the end of that, that relationship terminating. And finally, condition number eight, the owner of the premises, which has been granted approval for such conditional use, shall certify annually on a form provided by the zoning official that the conditions for the conditional use are still being satisfied. Obviously, here, they're not complying with the conditional use requirements, so they're extending, deviating that, deviating from that to the extent necessary for this approval, if this is to be approved. But they would still be certifying annually to the zoning official that they're complying with every condition of whatever resolution would be adopted, if it were, were to act favorably on the application. As far as conditions go, there's only, I think, one condition noted in Mr. Schlesm, and that would still applicable here outside of the deed restriction, that's that the applicant will see, or that the application will be subject to the review and approval of the Burton Township Sewerage Authority, and additional conditions indicated that they'd be complying with all building codes, and to the extent it might be necessary, and already covered, the first floor of the garage would continue to be used as a garage, and would be used as part of the apartment.
Would it be building codes as of the date of construction, though, since we're not constructing anything now?
Whatever applies.
Okay.
And that is it.
Thank you.
I think, sorry, it was a little long.
That was a little longer than I thought.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's a lot of stuff.
All right, thank you. I know we heard some comments from board members as we were going along here. Does anyone want to add some additional thoughts as we debate this one?
I would just repeat that I would not be a yes unless the time restriction was lower than the five. I think two-year maximum, in my opinion, but, I mean, I'm open to discussion with the other members.
I would just point out the applicant offered three years.
They, yeah, okay, okay.
I mean, just generally, I think that the property isn't necessarily suitable for its purpose, even if it was used for that purpose for a period of time for a family member to live in a, in a park, you know. If you look at the history of the property, it was, we wanted to do something, we did it, then we came back and got approval. Oh, we, we did something, we dug, you know, we put electrical in, we put plumbing in it. It wasn't ever really approved initially. It was, we did this, let's come back to approval. Now, we're going through the same routine again with this same property that was never really approved for the purpose that they're trying to get now on the second and third try. So, I looked at the property. It's a very long property. I don't think it's suitable for parking, or multiple, we're almost creating a multiple-family instance here on a very small lot, with a very small driveway, a very small parking in the back, saying, let's make sure that they do this, and this, and this, and this, and make sure that we watch it. I drove by this house, this house actually last, I didn't know where it was before this application, and I drive by twice a day, and I watch it, just to see what's happening on the property. Do I think, right now, that there's excessive use? Probably not. Could there be? I think there could be, and I think two or three cars sitting in that driveway, and that back lot, and not using the, the garage for its purpose, like we typically see, could create a hardship for the neighbors, and an issue for just the community of that neighborhood, because it's a very tight area. It's a road that gets used very frequently to, and I, I just, I'm not more disapplication than excuse. I think it varies from the intent of the ordinance to have a family member live in an apartment, in a single, I don't know, in a, in a large property, or in a home, while they're, we've seen other applications that go through while they're elderly parents that might then vacate the property when they move into assisted living. We've had some other applications like that. We've had some other applications where people asked for usage after they did the same thing, and we, I think we've denied it actually, where they bought the property, thought they could use as apartment, and we denied that application for that purpose, too. But I, I think this is even a little bit farther, where it's, it's someone buying a property, renting out one as an investment, letting a family member live there, and they're not connected enough compared to what the ordinance is stating. So, we're varying very far from what the ordinance is, not just a little bit, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. Absolutely agree.
I was just gonna say, in my opinion, this is almost akin to creating a two-family house, when people are in two different buildings or not on the same property. And to my understanding, in this town, two-family houses are grand, are grandfathered in until they are changed into a single-family house, and they can never go back. I, I just don't like the idea of, of starting the idea that you can start creating two-family houses in this town, and that's, I, I, I think it sets a bad precedent.
I, I think that Mr. Kraus stated my concerns very, very well. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. I do, I've had, I've been troubled by this application since the beginning. I did, I really, when it has become clear that it is, it was merely an investment property, that the, there was no relation of the occupants to, they had no relationship to New Jersey, but that doesn't make any difference, but it was still a investment property. So, I have had a problem with this application, so I am with Mr. Kraus that I am concerned about approving this application.
I mean, I think if the state changes the rules, we don't have any say in this matter possibly, or we can still put some restrictions on the safety of the property, and, and, you know, driveway space and parking space, which are normal on any property, but that hasn't come yet, so I don't think we should create another two-family instance just because it was before.
Also, parking more than one car on, like, in the yard or whatever, doesn't that compact the, the surface of the soil and create lot coverage just by the fact that you're doing this? Am I wrong about that? You have said this before, so it's...
Yeah, wherever you park, yeah, they'd have to park in the driveway. You'd have to get enough driveway there.
You can park in the driveway, just that you can never, you know, I mean, it's like, how do you back up into a business?
You're just saying, it's not a safety issue.
So, I don't normally interject, but there's a parking area between the buildings?
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
So, so part of my concern, too, with, like, more than one person living there, I, I certainly want, wouldn't want to interfere with someone getting into a relationship. My thought would be get into a relationship and move out. Move into a place would be my hope, but if you added another car, if the person who lives in the house, if that dynamic changed, and they needed another car, you're, you're getting into a situation, as people are growing and families are growing, that it, this, the site no longer accommodates it. I do think that, right now, it's probably working. However, in my opinion, it goes against the intent of the master plan, and that's a level of the criteria that I can't justify. Could it create some detriment to the public good? It could, if it were to become something more than it is. So, if we were to add two people, if it were five years down the road, I, I just, I just think that it's going against the intent of the master plan, and therefore, I want to be able to give him time to move out, to make a plan and go, but as it stands right now, I, I can't see three years.
So, from, from my standpoint, I appreciate everybody's comments. I, I also can't get comfortable approving or granting the variances requested here. I, I do think it impairs the intent of the, of the master plan. I think the language is very specific around what is allowed and what isn't allowed, so I do think it goes against that. The issue I have is, if, if I'm a no on the application, I, I find it challenging to be yes for some period of time. I will trust in the town services and the way they deal with that. I, I assume Mr. Schley doesn't drive from here to the property to, to make someone leave. I think, you know, there's already months built in, so I am comfortable trusting whatever the normal process is on that. For me, I want to vote yes or no on the application without any timeframe. That's my own personal view. Are there other comments, or does someone like to make a motion? You know, there's a couple of different views here, and that's, that's fine. Does someone feel comfortable making a motion on this application? I'm happy with this one, too. Okay, so from my standpoint, I would make a motion and ask our attorney to draft a resolution denying the variances asked here. It's a D three variance. You know, there's positive and negative criteria, to be honest. I couldn't come up with significant positive benefits to the neighborhood or, or the community, and that clearly, I thought, was an impairment to the intent and purpose of our master plan, and therefore, I am not comfortable with this. It's something that's clearly not allowed in our ordinance, and I didn't think that this is an exceptional situation that warranted going against that, so my motion would be to deny that application.
I'll second.
Ms. Kiefer.
Um, Dr. Arg.
Yes.
Are there any other motions?
No, just to be clear, a yes, a yes is to deny.
Yeah, just to be clear, just so everybody knows.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
Yes.
Wait, hang up. Ms. Kiefer, can you start again, so, because I didn't hear. I didn't hear more.
I got it, I'm scrolling over.
Ms. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairwoman Janiers?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Zelli.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
I know what we wanted to hear, but...
What time is it in California? Have a great night.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the completeness in public hearing for Shafner, which is ZB two-four-zero-zero-four, especially we have here?
Yes.
Real quick, Madam Chair, just to point out for the record, I had an opportunity to review the applicant's notice for this evening. I deem it to be content, or deem it to be sufficient in terms of both its content, time, and service. You think I could script rate at this point. Sent the owners of the property to the two hundred feet of the subject property on January eighteenth, and published in the Burton City News on January sixteenth. The board is jurisdiction to hear and decide the case in my legal opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
So, why don't I swear everybody in? So, you, you guys are the applicants?
Yes.
All right. We need to swear you guys in to testify as well as our professionals. Bob, you swear or affirm the testimony. You're about to provide the truth, the whole truth, the other truth.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good evening. Catherine Muller from the company of now Muller Engineering. Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Yeah, 30 years in business this year.
Nice.
New business cards.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, I didn't stack my pockets. Still, same legal entity as, as Paige Muller. So I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, owner of Muller Engineering in Warren Township, and my license is in good standing. So we're here for the application of block 2903, lot 15.
Just one, real quick, Madam Chair, she accepted as an expert?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Bauman.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got it from now.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're here for a single-family lot. I have the Shafners here. They're going to introduce their application first and then I'll go through the plans for you. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
So I take it Jared and Rebecca Shafner?
Yes.
Shafner, yes.
Shafner, okay. You guys both reside at 17 Woodstone Road in Baskin Ridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, so yes, I'm Jared. This is my wife Rebecca. We reside at 17 Woodstone Road. We moved in, in April of 2022, so we've been there approximately three years now. We have a two-year-old little boy. We are expecting another child in a couple of months. Thank you. And we are here seeking a variance in connection with a paver patio we are looking to install in our backyard. Currently, we have a raised deck as well as a gravel area in our backyard. We're looking to replace that deck and the gravel area with one large level paver patio, primarily for, to have a large level space for our children to play, also for entertaining purposes, an eating area, an area to play, potentially an area for a fire pit down the road, as well as looking to extend the current side walkway to the backyard on the south side of the property so that it connects to the, the paver patio in the back to provide an easy means of access from the front inside of the house to the back. So that, yep, that's the purpose of the, the variance, just to install, install the paver patio.
I, hi, I'm Rebecca Shafner. I would just add that the reason that we're wanting to replace this is the wood deck that's existing there is starting to fall apart and rot and, excuse me. So it's, it's also a bit of a safety concern that we have for our toddler and then the, our, you know, soon-to-be new child as well.
Was the gravel area there when you bought the house?
Yes, that's correct. The gravel area was there. And there is a step from the wood deck to the gravel area. So we want to, again, make that one flat, level surface for, for safety for our young children as well.
Okay. The pictures that we're looking at, is that essentially how the back of the house looked when you bought the property? Have you done any work?
That's correct. No, we have not changed anything since we've bought the property.
These photographs.
Yes.
Could you guys tell us, please, open one?
I took the photographs and they would have.
Do you have a copy of these photographs in front of you?
Not in front of me, no.
Not in front of us.
Do you want to take them?
Yeah.
Sure. And then maybe just, you can walk through them. Because you mentioned a couple of the walkways, just to make sure we know exactly what you're saying. If you can do it in order, probably.
Okay.
So the first photo, this is, so this is taken from standing right behind the house. So this is looking out into our rear neighbor's property beyond the fence that you see there. The second photo, this is the south side of the property. This doorway here goes into the garage. This is the existing walkway from the driveway to that side door. We're looking to extend this walkway along the south side of the house and then around the back connecting to the new paver patio. See, the third photo here is taken from kind of the end of the gravel area. So there's a, currently a stone wall that acts as kind of a retaining wall at the end of that gravel area. So this is taken from that spot, looking at the back of the house. The next photo, these.
Did you make them like this?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the next photo here, these are the current stairs leading into our back door, which enters into the kitchen.
And you can see some of the, where it's already starting to deteriorate and rot.
This photo here is also the back of the house. This room here, this is our family room. This area, so you can see this is the south side of the house over here. So this is where I referred to before, we'll have the walkway extend along the south side of the house. And then our proposal is to add a paver patio in this area as well, behind what is the living, the family room, rather.
Yes. And, and keeping the trees, so we're not proposing to remove any of the existing trees that are on the property.
Right. All existing trees, all existing bushes will remain.
So even this tree right here in front of the?
Yeah.
Yes, we would put the patio around the, yeah. So, no, we're not, we're not proposing to remove any of the, of the trees.
This is, this picture, this is another photo of the back of the house. Again, these trees are remaining. This is the, the retaining wall, the current retaining wall that I mentioned before. So that's the end of the gravel area. So, and you can see the step as well. So there are multiple steps from the raised deck down to the gravel area. There's also a step on the north side of the deck down to the grass.
Yes, and the trees will stay.
The trees will stay, yes.
There's four evergreens there and those will remain as well.
Yes.
Okay. And is this how it looks now?
Yes.
Yes, there's a, probably just a little bit more rot in some of the places because we, those were taken last year and with the.
But the deck is still.
Yes, that's correct.
There, running away and you still have the gravel area.
That's correct.
Yes.
Remember these taken, these photos?
These would have been taken before our application was submitted originally in.
I believe January of 2024.
So, yeah, the, the pictures, I believe, were taken in sometime in 2023.
Okay. So is this large tree that's going to remain?
Yes.
Yes. There are actually multiple, there are three large tree, yes, that's multiple, but they are all going to remain. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it seems that you're over on coverage already, but you're saying you didn't do any of that work.
That's correct. That was existing when we purchased the home.
Can I suggest, is most of the patio going to this?
I'll present the plans. I just wanted to let them.
The pictures are great. Thank you for having us. Real pictures versus.
That's helpful, right? Did you talk to any neighbors about the application?
We submitted the certified letters to the neighbors. We had not heard any.
Anybody voice any concerns to you?
Okay. So there's no more questions for the applicants. They're still here to answer questions if need be.
I just have one quick question. Has work begun?
No. There's some material in the driveway, but no work has been done.
Okay.
They got a little, they got a little excited over the, over the patio and, as you've heard, this is, they got deemed incomplete from the records I have in January of 2024. So then we were brought on, time to do the survey, time to do the plans, time to get scheduled and all that. So here we are in 2025. We did a full survey of the lot, but on the cover sheet here, I have the existing conditions with lot 15 in the middle, rectangular lot. It's undersized at 19,00561 in the R six zone, which requires 32,000. So we're at point 44, point 449 acres when point 75. So it's, it's quite undersized. The only thing, a single-family neighborhood, the house I have right now north up, the house to the south, which is where we will be expanding some of the living area. I just want to explain the orientation of their property. Their driveway abuts our property. They have a attached garage with a driveway apron and they have a detached garage that's front-loaded out to the street. So where, you can see I'm circling here is where some new patio is going to be installed from the house to the retaining walls where the existing deck and gravel is installed. And also as part of the application, we're asking for the variance for the existing shed to remain on the right side of the lot. It abuts the side of their detached garage. It's right behind it. It's been there for a long time. I don't know if it showed up in the pictures. It's got some moss on the top. It's been there historically. It was there when the Shafners bought the property. So we're just going to ask for that relief for the, the side yard setback, for the existing shed to remain. I'll move on to sheet two and explain the proposed improvements with a picture in front of us, just to explain what you've already heard. There's an existing paver, or it's a paver or concrete walkway that goes to the side door into the garage. It's lawn from there to the rear yard. So we're proposing as part of the project to connect that with hardscape. So a visitor from the, whether they park in the driveway or on the street, can actually walk to the backyard and not through the lawn. We have additional patio behind their living room here and then the larger patio, this is over what was the existing deck. You can see that outlined behind. And from the photos, you can see that from the edge of the deck to this wall was all gravel. In the professional review letters, there was some discrepancy about coverage, the gravel, the survey, the original application without the benefit of a topo survey. So I went through the numbers and the existing coverage that I note on our plans is 3,726 square feet. That does not include the deck and that does not include the gravel area. So even by taking those areas out, they're still over on coverage. Including those areas, the coverage goes up to 4116 and that still excludes the deck. The easy number that I was looking at tonight, if you took the existing improvements that are there, and Bernard's has a very unique ordinance to exclude decks, and you look at their usable area with the deck and the gravel included, this project increases their usable area by 565 square feet. So a small percentage of their lot area. It's, it's due to the zoning that a deck doesn't count and also my numbers didn't include the gravel, which is not a road surface, is impervious, but gravel counts as coverage for your zoning. So we did concentrate the extended patio over the existing conditions. We, there would be a walkway that we would desire to that area and this area is 12 feet wide. That allows for some storage along the house and also to get by and possibly put a picnic table for the kids over in that area. It's by the evergreens, it's shaded. So that's the extent of the improvements from a zoning and coverage standpoint. As we increase the improvements, we need to provide stormwater management. We're increasing them, what we've noted, 1,518 from what's existing that excludes the gravel. You know, there's a lot of numbers here, pluses and minuses. So we do exceed the 1,000 square foot increase. So we've provided the stormwater management. We have a arch system in the back. We're familiar with the Bernard soils. They're not always the best. Sometimes you get lucky, but not that often. So these are fairly shallow. I have a detail on the plan. They're shallow and they're also easily transportable to the back. It's pretty tight on the side. They could bring in a small machine and actually two people could carry these plastic arches to the back. The ones that we picked are a total of 28 inches high, so two feet high. It's not a big system. That's why we have a nice-sized footprint. We did only account for the storage underneath the overflow, which was one of the comments in the engineering review letter. And we will update the void ratio in the stone. Bernard's is different than most towns at point three or point 33. We use point four. So we will update that. We sized the system for the increase in coverage that we are netting out at 1,518 square feet. So this does not only cover new impervious over what's lawn, but I hadn't accounted for the gravel. So I'm also providing for the change from gravel, which is considered impervious to pavers. So if we included the gravel, I would have 390 square feet less to design for. So since we're here for a variance, we included that for stormwater mitigation to put a little extra storage in the system, so to say, so to speak. And we looked at the house. Right now, the downspouts go to the ground. There's splash blocks. The ones on the north side drain overland to the back. And there's one on the right side that has a leader and drains also to the back. So we are proposing those to be picked up. And the area of roof in, that we're collecting is greater than that 1,500 square feet. So we're increasing it by my numbers, not including the, the gravel by 1,518, and we're collecting 1,540. So it's not that we're designing it for this size and not collecting it. So that's, that's how we became, did the, the drainage design. We had worked with the property owner on a number of options for the patio. And due to the elevations of the deck, they have a higher deck landing, they have a lower deck landing, and then the gravel's even lower, and they have a, a wall in the back. And we lifted it up and recall, we dropped it down and we had two different levels. And I think where we ended up here, it's all one level for the paver patios pitched to the back. We're maintaining the existing drainage patterns. And then they'll just have an extra step, step or two, coming off the house. So that is an impervious coverage variance. If the lot area was complying with the zone, we would be under the 18% for what we're proposing. Hardscape is preferred to decks in a lot of different scenarios. This is at grade. So their deck was slightly off, off the ground. Perhaps they put that in to not have the variance. It's a little loophole in Bernard's. I've used myself in designs. But it doesn't last that close to the, the ground that long. So rather than replace that and have the same concerns and the same elevation problems, they're going to be doing everything in hardscape or they hope to do everything in hardscape. So that's the gist of the, the application. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think you, you said, as I, I'm not sure if I heard, where are the leaders going right now off the roof? Are they going just into the ground?
No, they're going overland.
Overland, okay.
Yeah, they discharge the splash blocks. Yep.
So you're not changing that and peaking and?
We're gonna, we're gonna pipe them into the, into the back. Yep.
So right now, it's going up, just going into the ground, I'll call it, right?
Yeah, right now, it's just running down the sides. We have the roof leaders, which will be installed and, and brought to the back.
Is the, the hardscape or the new stone, is it pitched in any way or is it just, is it completely flat?
No, it's, it's, it's graded away from the house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just slightly graded so it won't.
Correct.
Water run off the edge of the drop there.
Correct. And then it'll, that'll actually go overland, so it's quote disconnected. It's not going directly to the street like a driveway would.
And everything is pitched for their backyard, so it won't even?
Correct. This is the low point of the property in the back right corner.
Ms. Mulholland, did you consider it all in your designs, since this is quite a bit of the impervious coverage over the ordinance anyway to some, did you think of ways that you could narrow? narrow the gap between what was allowed and what this proposal is? I know you said you toyed around with a lot of different designs.
That was mostly elevation designs. So again, if you look at what the deck is and the gravel area, we're netting out a five-hundred and change square foot increase for the living space. So, you know, I always review it for sensibility. And I think when you take a walkway across the back, and we widened it to twelve feet, that would be, I think that's usable area. You have it along the back of their house here for storage. Because you usually put your grill and your kid's bin and the toys and everything along the house. On this side, if you came down the stairs, it would be right in front of you. So this allows not only a little bit of storage area, but some walkway and flat area as well. So they use all the area, and now they have another child. So I didn't want to decrease the area and ask for the variance. Yes, yes. They wouldn't have gravel counts, so you couldn't put it out in the yard.
Do you have any lighting proposed in the plan?
I don't have any lighting, but we agree to, if there is any lighting out there, it'll all be low-level landscaping facing down.
Converting the gravel area from, like, say, the new patio back to the wall, make it a little grass level wall? Children can still play on the grass.
To have, they actually have a very nice grass backyard now with a playset, I believe. It's right kind of in the middle of the backyard. It's the standard plastic kind of swing set.
Also, while you have workers that are digging for the recharge system, could the shed be moved?
If you look at the, it's not in the photos. I had one of my employees go out and take photos of it. It doesn't look like it's going to handle a move.
Is it in the first picture, the shed? What am I looking at in the left corner of that first picture?
Yeah. No, it doesn't show up in any of these.
What is in that first picture, behind the trees?
Oh, it's like a little barn. Yeah, that's like a barn, is what it looked like. Yeah, you can't see the, the shed is behind these evergreens. And it's pretty well vegetated all the way around.
The neighbors can't see it either?
Hmm?
The neighbors can't see it either?
No, it kind of aligns with their detached garage. It's just off the back corner of their detached garage. So it's certainly not visible from their home. And then there's a fence, and there's some plantings and landscaping along there as well. That, there is some intent to put a little bit of planting to the side, and I'll let the applicants talk to that, just to augment around those four evergreens.
So lots of the right, and the detached garage, that basic little cuff, I mean, it's a garage, it's only that they won't look in their backyard from the other side. It's, is it evergreens, or is it just, I can't, we don't have a picture of that?
Right. This side, there's vegetation, which actually probably takes up half of that. I looked at that side of the house as well. They have their equipment here, and then there's a drainage path from their downspouts. And then there's more vegetation along that side. But we are not expanding the project in that direction. That's why I didn't focus on that direction. You can see we're adding, I think it's two and a half or three feet right here off the side of the deck. The walkway and this patio area is adjacent to lot sixteen. And when I looked at the pictures.
Between the two houses.
Between fourteen and ours, yes. And that'll all remain.
That I saw. I don't recall as much screening between sixteen and fifteen now. I recall taking note that there was a lot between fourteen and fifteen, not sixteen and fifteen.
Right. Well, it's just, it's there. If there was screening, it would benefit us because it's their driveway and detached garage. And they have garage doors facing our property, and the detached garage, which faces the street. So it's their own little vehicle courtyard there.
We see this big detached garage, you're saying, on this side of this picture. Is that picture looking that way?
Which picture?
First one.
Is it looking towards that garage?
No, that's looking towards the back, towards the farm behind, the barn behind us.
Oh, it's back.
Right, if you came down these stairs. And turned to look towards the back.
Was there any consideration put into maybe doing an open deck and then a patio around it?
No. Right, to mitigate the runoff. And again, it's pretty much all improved now. This main portion of the patio is over the deck and the gravel that's there now. We could plant some shrubs on the right side, but again, it's just buffering their driveway.
I know you said, you know, it's an undersized lot or R six zone. But it doesn't look undersized for the area. Would you agree with that?
Yes. Yes, they're pretty standard size, maybe a couple larger ones on the corners.
Okay.
And then obviously, larger ones behind us.
Right, as we go into a different zone, right?
Right, our four.
Mr. Schley, do you have any questions from your memo that Warren touched on?
I guess my one comment, number five, about how much of the coverage is accounted for in the infiltration system? Is that going to account for everything over the eighteen percent?
No, we accounted for fifteen-hundred-and-eighteen, which is new patio and the conversion of the deck. And the gravel.
At the end of the day, though, you have, you're slightly over. So you've got enough volume to handle sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet. The overage is seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-four square, so it's only another hundred square feet to accommodate all of the impervious cover over what the ordinance will permit.
We can enlarge the system for everything over eighteen percent. Whichever the.
Or reduce the coverage. Or reduce the coverage, or both.
Anything else, Mr. Schley?
I think everything else was, my comment number six in my January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five review memo just talks about the standard soil erosion control measures that are going to be required by the engineering department, or they're probably not the soil conservation district.
I believe, I did a generous, rough estimate before coming tonight, and it was at about forty-five-hundred. So I don't anticipate it being over five-thousand disturbance.
And the only other thing I would point out is that back when prior property owner was in for a variance in two thousand and six, the board did recognize the existing shed as a pre-existing nonconformity back then. Obviously, it's still pre-existing nonconformity now. No, I mean, certainly appropriate to see if it could be moved to conform, but I would say a variance would not be required to let it stay there.
You've been in the property for a couple of years now?
Yes, almost three years.
And you've been living there for three years? Has anybody ever commented about the shed, location of the shed? Mr. Quinn, if we switch over to your memo, we touched on some of these. I'm sure you want to share some words of caution.
Sure, yeah. Some of this is technical. Kathy already discussed some of the stormwater stuff she'll take care of. As we always do, anytime an applicant comes in here and requests relief from the ordinance, we caution them that whatever you're approved at, that's your number. Don't go over. Oftentimes, excess material lying around, or for whatever reason, it tends to mushroom. But that'll just cause you grief, and you'll have to come back to the board. So that's really the big cautionary tale from that. You'll have to get, soil conservation district, Kathy will walk you through that.
And we had a discussion just prior to the meeting. I think what they're going to build is a couple square feet less than what we showed to save that tree at the corner. Because my question prior to them is, do you ever want, think you're going to want a generator? And I know we've talked about that in front of the board. And I think if we notch out that corner, that could compensate for a generator later. So I, they've heeded the warning of the coverage. What we get is allowed.
So in any regard, in terms of stormwater and wherever we end up on impervious cover, I think we've agreed that the applicant will provide stormwater for everything over the eighteen percent, right?
Yes.
That's not in my memo, but that's something we'll agree to, I think. We talked about the shed being relocated. I had included that as well. I think that's all I really have of any relevance here.
Okay, and then?
Oh, I'm sorry. One thing I did want to, just to get some sense of the degree of the increase, we were trying to get an idea of what the existing number was, so we knew how much we were increasing, right? You're stating fifteen-hundred now, but it's likely to be closer to a thousand or maybe a little over a thousand. And again, it's the proposed that counts. But I just, so that the board would have some sense for how much additional impervious cover is being added from the existing condition. I don't think we ever really answered that clearly.
Right. I can give you the, I have every version of the number other than that one. So if we took the thirty-seven twenty-six and we added the three-ninety for the gravel, is forty-one sixteen.
What does that give you?
And we're proposing.
What does that give you as a percentage, forty-one sixteen? Do you know?
I can tell you.
Five-six-one.
Divided by, oh, I have it here, twenty-one point zero four percent.
Twenty-one point four zero?
Zero four.
Twenty-one zero four, that's what you're saying, is the current?
That's the current. Okay, I don't have anything else on this.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And then, did you also receive a copy of the environmental commission memo?
We did not.
You did not? Okay, well, I can, we can share one. Just want to make sure that you are comfortable. So there's comments, one through seven.
So, yes, we did, I stand corrected. We did receive this and review it. A number of these items, we come for variance. And then pending the variance, we do compliance plan, which will work as our lock grading, soil erosion, sediment control. So the area disturbance, we'll do the soil erosion, we'll comply with all those. Best management practices. We have the stormwater management in the back. If landscaping's added, we'll focus on native landscaping. And again, we're not removing any trees. And number seven, I think, is just a word to.
And just to be clear, you guys would be complying with everything of Mr. Quinn's and Mr. Schley's, one of those two?
Yes.
Okay, any additional questions this time? Is there any questions from the public or other Ms. Mueller or all the Schaffners? Since we didn't ask that before, any questions from the public? Are there any comments from the public on this application, either for or against it? All right. Now, Ms. Mueller, do you have any closing comments? Go for it.
No, just in summary, I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. We tried to concentrate the improvements where they already were. I think it's going to add value to the surrounding neighborhood. It's going to remove a safety concern for the homeowner. So again, I think there's positives to the application.
Thank you. Just doing more math. Five-hundred-and-ninety-six, is that what you said that that was? That's what I get?
I had five-sixty-five.
Oh, five-sixty-five? All right.
Beyond the gravel, including the gravel in the deck.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Anybody want to kick us off here?
So as I go through the criteria for granting the waivers, I don't necessarily see any substantial detriment, but I don't see any real substantial benefit. I think it's, there's, and I don't see a hardship. I think the houses are all pretty uniform in this area. I don't see it as an undersized lot amidst a lot of larger properties. So I do see some benefits to the property owner for having a larger space for children. But I do believe that that could probably be reduced a little bit. I do appreciate also the stormwater management system. But again, I think with something maybe just scaled back a little bit, I think we could probably make this work.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bellman. You know, I agree. You know, it's clearly undersized for the zone. It's not undersized for the neighborhood, or at least it doesn't appear to be that way. I think, you know, the challenge I'm having is they're already over. They're three percent over. No fault of theirs, we get that. But they're already three percent over, and you're asking for another five-point-eight percent. If my numbers are correct. So that's a lot.
Percentage-wise.
Percentage. It's a lot, and I appreciate it's undersized. But you also, the land is what it is, and we're covering even more of it. So I have a problem with the absolute number. I do think there are some benefits, even from a safety standpoint. I'd like to facilitate this project in some way. I'd like to see the deck redone. And I think that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, leveling it out and getting rid of these steps. I think there's a lot of safety things that we can point to. But I am not comfortable with the amount that's being asked for here. And then, you know, similar to other applications, rather than to direct the applicants on what to do, do this, do that, I view that as outside of the board's purview. So I would be comfortable giving them a little leeway, but not what they're asking for.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing also. That's why I asked Ms. Mueller in your going back and forth with the applicant in terms of, did you think of any way that, you know, any other design that would, that was sort of a lead to say if you had thought of other designs, some of which might be, have less impervious coverage. But I am concerned also as well.
Okay, I'm hearing the opinion of the board.
Is there a number that the board is comfortable with? Because then we can ask if you want to change your application or not change your application. Is there a number that the board, unless there's other opinions, also happy to hear other opinions. But if there's a number that the board is comfortable with, perhaps we can suggest that such that they can have a path to facilitate their project.
The number they are at right now, again, is?
The?
21.
21.
They're at 20, they're currently at 21.04, and they're asking for 26.8, and 18% is allowed.
So, if we went to like 25, would that give them a patio?
Yeah, that's, it would. It's still a little high for me personally.
Yeah, I'm coming up the houses at 11.9. Not going to the porch and drop that in the driveway or the sheds or anything. I mean, I would be comfortable with 80, 23%.
23 times.
That's what I was thinking, Ms. Paktar, 23, 24, kind of.
Right.
Kind of like splitting, splitting the difference between.
Can the board be comfortable with 23? Anybody want to argue for something else?
Sort of like splitting the difference between, you know, it's a great, but it's a place to start.
There's other ways.
In the learning point of view, when you do the treatment, you're supplying those, you know, stories. It does take care of impervious surfaces. Eventually, what you want to do is collect all the water, discharge to the ground. So, when you are transferring, essentially, you are meeting the essence of what we call these groundwater recharge, or, you know, having a pervious surface. So, you know, if you are providing a big enough system to store water, that's equivalent to having, you know, more pervious areas. So, if they are going to put a bigger, slightly bigger system, then I'm okay with going to 25, because, you know.
Yeah. I guess my.
At 25%, just so that the board understands, because it's a small lot, percentages add up.
Yeah, sure.
If you take the usable area they have in their yard with the deck and the gravel area, they're at 46.79, which is less, which is more than 25%. 9, 5, 6, 1. It's actually 24%. So, they're using 24% of the lot now.
With the gravel and the deck, you're saying?
With the gravel and the deck.
If you were to replace that with patio, the space that's currently covered.
We would already be at 24 without an expansion. So, to do this project, it'd be nice to get a little bit more area. Can I have a two-minute conversation with my clients out in the hallway?
There's an option to do an elevated deck.
We can just do, put all new deck back and do exactly this, and it would be deck, and they would have the usable area. And there would be no stormwater management required, because we would be under 1,000 square feet. So, there'd be no benefit in the stormwater. So, you know, our stormwater is mitigating not only what's perceived to be there, it's the expansion as well. So, it's not just what we're increasing it, we're mitigating what's there as if it was pavers as well. So, there is a benefit that would be lost if we went back to deck. So, it's something to weigh, and if you can give me a minute, I'll go talk to my clients.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Do the homeowners or any of the, because you have issues with water in your basements at any time?
Never.
Okay. So, the stormwater mitigation is nice, but it's not improving someone else's property at all?
It would be. It would be.
Yeah, because you're capturing your water.
It's, it's a, it's a neighborhood improvement, just as every property flows to somebody else's property.
Kind of improving their property by putting it into the ground versus over the grass, which everybody else's property, it goes in the grass.
We're collecting the area that's the deck now, we're collecting the area that's the gravel now, we're collecting everything over 18% per what we were agreeing to.
My own personal view is that it's not just the capturing system. We can have the best supercharged capture system out there. It doesn't mean we'd be comfortable covering the entire backyard.
I fully understand, and I, you know, it's also.
Yeah, it's a agreed thing.
It's what we're doing to justify our variance. And, you know, 1% is less than 200 square feet. So, we're at 24 now with what they're using. So, let me go have a conversation with my clients.
Two minutes, please.
Sure. Yeah, I know there's other applications.
Okay. We're going to take a break for two minutes. Okay. We are, we're back from our short break.
Okay. Amended application. I discussed it with our clients. You know, they do have one child and a child on the way, and they use the area that they have. If we included the deck and the gravel, we would be at 24%. The one goal that we don't achieve, it keeps them whole in their backyard for what they inherited, but it does not give them the walkway, which I think is a real benefit to using the backyard, especially small children. The moms come with their little baby buggies and drive them to the back. I just measured it out. The walkway along the side of the house from here, taking out this patio here and just coming to the edge of the main patio, is 65 feet, linear feet, times only 3 feet wide. We like to do 4 for passing. If we kept it at 3, that's 200 square feet. That equates to another percent. So, to keep them whole in the back, that would trim this little bump out over here off. Keep them whole for what they have in decking and gravel is 24%. They'd really like to have this walkway. That's one more percent. That brings us to 25. Right now, our application is asking for just under 27. So. I would like the board to consider that. We're open to hearing feedback. But again, the main goal is the connection will lose the expansion beyond what's not impervious now, or decking now.
Basically, a little leg to the right is what you're talking about, just running a walkway across.
We would take this straight to the house, trim, trim this part off. It's right to the edge of the, what's the decking now. But we'd have to extend the walkway. So, it wouldn't fully go away. We would have a walkway through it, coming up here and over here where we expanded to the left of the existing deck, we would pull that back to the edge of the deck.
Is that usually 25, you say?
That gives us 25. We're at, if you take the existing coverage we have as 37.26, 37.26. There's 390 square feet of gravel, and there's 563 square feet of deck. That's 46.79. That is 19, 5, 6, 1. That's 23.92%. And then, 200 square feet for 65 by 3, walkway is another 200, which is a whole percentage.
25% is a 60% size lot. That gets you down to 15% of the full-size lot.
I didn't do the full math. I trust your math.
Okay. So, you amended your application to what?
Proposed 25% coverage.
Plus a walkway?
No, including the walkway.
Okay. You're just amending your application for 25% and you're telling us why?
That's correct.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Mueller?
And we'll still agree to do the stormwater for everything over 18.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Any comments on this application from the public? Okay. Anything else for us, Ms. Mueller?
That's it. I'd like to hear the board's opinion before.
Yes. Okay. Anybody want to kick us off here for deliberations?
I mean, I would be in favor. I think it's a lot better at the 25% amount.
Yeah, I mean, you have to give some credit for the fact that it is an undersized lot, because it's a percentage that's being applied, you know, to everybody. I mean, you do that for other people, too. And I think that at least gets the patio down to a, like a less visible size. It's not quite as imposing.
Okay. Okay. I still have a problem with the absolute number. I don't see anything magic around the existing gravel area, other than like the fact that it's already there and you want to use that space, and it just seems too big of a number for me personally.
I think there are other ways of attaining the area that you're looking for. So, for me, it's a little bit too much.
Okay. Is, Kippe, any comments? Dr. Argwall, any comments?
Well, I appreciate that the applicants have, you know, tried to skinny it down, but I still am a little concerned with the 25.
Okay.
Probably, I'm still around the 24.
All right. So, there's mixed views?
I'm, they had stormwater plants, so that.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion? There's different views here. So, does anybody want to make a motion on this application? And then we'll vote.
My motion would be to deny. If I were to make one, so.
Okay.
What's the motion?
The motion would be to deny.
I could make the motion. I don't know if I'm allowed to as an alternate.
You're voting on it.
Okay. I would, I would make a motion to approve.
Grant the application, the variances that she's asking for at 25%.
Yes.
Is there a second on that? Okay. There's a motion and a second.
Okay. Do we have a C1, C2?
Okay. That's a good question.
Is it a C1 or C2 variance?
That's a board decision.
Yes.
I just don't see it as a hardship. I just don't.
C1 here is an undersized lot, is what you said.
I mean, you could also, I mean, I can't apply, I'm just a lawyer, but theoretically, the board can find that, you know, the benefits of the application outweigh the detriments. There's some planning benefits here.
Okay. So, it could be under C1 and C2, so if you want to amend your motion to, to say it's under C1 and C2?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance under C1 and C2.
Thank you. And there's a second from Dr. Argwall?
Thank you.
And that would be with all the conditions in our various court professional memos, as well as the environmental commission memo, and the applicant would be.
Go ahead. Nope. Go ahead.
Providing, I'm sorry, additional, resizing the stormwater system to accommodate the full, anything over 18%.
Correct. And we're only approving up to 25.
Okay, Ms. Kivak.
Dr. Argwall?
She's in.
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
No.
Mr. Kraus?
No.
Ms. Pedici?
No.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
Chairwoman Jeeners?
No.
Four noes?
Yeah. So, the motion failed for 25.
It failed for 25. There may be a motion based upon some of the comments here at a slightly lower number. Would you like to consider amending your application for a number like 24? Before we go on to the next case.
For the walkway, if we were to put in stepping stones surrounded by sufficient lawn, would that count against impervious?
Part of it would, I think.
If you're just going to put stepping stones on the grass and not dig it out like a foundation, it would, just only the stones would count.
Just the physical horizontal.
I just point out in the past, where if you set a threshold and give you the act of the flexibility to reduce down to that number. Also, if it were lawn, it could make its own motion, not necessarily in total parallel with what the applicant's proposing, but on its own motion.
Right.
Granted to 24%.
24 would approve what's pre-existing.
It would, it would be 24 and whatever you wanted to do with it.
24? We'll back it down to 24.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Another motion to approve at 24%.
Okay, for the same reasons that you voiced earlier? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Ms. Silver? Mr. Kraus was second. Dr. Argwall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Ms. Paktar?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Engineers?
Yes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Eats C. Carrigan. Variance ZB24023. Don't be afraid, it's a tough night, tough night in the town.
Good evening.
Yeah, no worries. Reorganized, I know. You know what? Just before we start there, on that last application, I'm not sure that we mentioned whether the shed could stay there or not?
It's already, it's already, it's pre-existing.
It's pre-existing? We didn't need to vote on that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm already. All right, so real quick before we get started, I'll just point out for the record, I had an opportunity to review the applicant's notice here. This is the Carrigan application. I don't know if you announced it or not, but their notice is good. Not insufficient, timely serve, poor disturbance section here in the sound of case, my legal opinion.
Thank you. Who do we have here?
I'm Dan Carrigan, home over at 71 North Maple Avenue.
Margot Carrigan.
Great. We're going to just ask you to speak right into that microphone because we're picking it up and it's recording. And we hear you want to do a patio and a pool.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? Do you want to tell us?
Ma'am, Chairwoman, I'm sorry.
I thought you did that, sorry.
Okay, so professionals, applicants, applicants engineer, presuming? Okay, is there a answer? Y'all swear a firm testimony about providing the truth, the whole truth, done with the truth?
I do.
You do.
Go ahead.
Again, my name is Dan Carrigan. This is my wife, Margot. We live at 71 North Maple Avenue. We've lived there for about 17 years. We have four kids, ranging from seven years old as of yesterday to 16 years old. We're here speaking with you all tonight, requesting an application for a variance so that we can install a pool in the backyard.
Does your engineer need to take us through the plans? Or can we go through these pictures? Or how?
Mr. Chang, correct?
Yes.
Could you please give the board your credentials and background licenses? I'm going to stand there.
Okay, Gary Chang. I am graduate of NGIT. I've been a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for over 25 years and I'm in good standing.
Thank you. We will accept you.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, we are proposing an in-ground swimming pool with a patio and a shed. And the exist, the allowable coverage is 18 percent. And we are asking for a variance of, let's see, where is it? 18.75 percent.
Well, it's 17 percent.
No, yeah, 15.
15, I'm sorry. Yes, 15, yes. So we're over by, you know, 3.75 percent.
Okay, and that's for the pool, a patio, walkway?
And a shed.
And a shed. And what's the shed for?
Storage.
Okay.
So that's all, that's all it really is for.
Okay, is it storage of what?
Toys, chairs.
Okay. Okay, not a pool house?
It's somewhat, well, I don't, I mean, it's, no one's going to live in there.
It's not like a recreational.
I do want electricity so I could have, you know, some lights and maybe a camera.
It's not a social space. You're not going to TV in there, not putting a floor. That's kind of more of a pool house thing.
Do you have a picture of the shed? Let me see that.
We don't have a shed, but I used to have.
We got a bunch, this is...
You have three pictures.
Three pictures. We can mark this for you. Exhibit A1, it's three, three-scale photographs of the shed. I guess an example of what the shed looked like.
Yeah, I mean...
I know that there is a difference in setback for sheds and or pool houses, something like that. But we are going to move it back to 20 feet, just, you know, just to make sure that there's not...
You're going to say it doesn't matter.
Right.
We're going to comply.
Exactly, yes. Yes, it will. By roughly 95 square feet another, so...
What is the size of the shed?
The size of the shed, it's... It's 192 square feet right now, so, you know, 10, 10 by 20 roughly, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Schley, what were you saying it was going to affect?
The, when he slides it over, it's going to be covering up some of the area that shows patio.
Oh.
We're going to reduce it by another 95 square feet.
Okay.
Excuse me? That's roughly 95. Get it to the math.
It's probably like a quarter of a percent or something like that.
Yeah, .22. .22.
.22. All right, so... So it's 18.47 is really what you're asking for, is that correct? Or no, you're still asking for 18 and 3/4?
It will be... 18.58.
Okay, 18, okay. You're asking for 18.58.
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's why I'm moving the shed to 20 feet off the property?
Right.
Okay, not 18, 20?
Right.
And you said it will have electricity in it? Will it have a bathroom?
No.
Okay, it'll have electricity, okay.
Okay, so we are providing stormwater management for all, you know, all the proposed U-impervious. So we're providing a inlet in the back to collect all the runoff and going into our stormwater management system. Should we go over the letter?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You're talking about Mr. Schley's memo?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. Number one and two just goes over the existing and proposed coverage. There was a discrepancy between the existing driveway and it was confirmed that the existing that was listed on the survey was correct. So that was revised. That's why I came up with the 18.8 instead of the 18.6 that was submitted previously, so... But, you know, with the reduction of the, by moving the shed and the reduction of the existing patio, it is, you know, it was, what I was saying, it was the 8, that's why it came out 18.58 percent. There was a question about the removal of some existing concrete. There was, there was some gravel area in the backyard that, some loose gravel back there that the survey called out to be concrete, but it actually has since been removed. So we took that out, you know, up the capulation. Yes.
Yes, this is it right here.
Right. Since it was already, you know, previously called out to be removed, so that was not, that was already discounted.
So that's not actual walkway?
Right, some, yeah, just, yeah, they call the concrete, but it's really just loose gravel, yeah. But it's going to get removed anyway. It was removed already, so...
I think we just clarify the, don't show as a reduction, walkway.
Right. Exactly, yes.
So the numbers don't need to be changed?
No, no, because it's already removed, yeah, so... So that was 3A and 3B. And then 3C talks about the coverage of the existing generators and concrete pad, which I also, you know, just took into account and added another 15 square feet for those.
So the 18.58, the shed moving?
Right.
And those couple things you just talked about?
Yes, I did. Okay, number four, we talked about the shed. We'll move it back to 20 feet. Number five, I mean, we, you know, the fence is going to be pool compliant. That's not a problem. Number six, we could provide that perk test prior to the approval. And number seven talks about soil erosion measures. We are over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, so we will apply to soil erosion also. Number eight, any, there are not going to be any trees being removed. Number nine. So this talks about, there's a stream that's roughly 500 feet away. Even with, with a 300 buffer, 300-foot buffers should not affect the property itself.
I'm not talking about the repairing zone, I'm talking about the actual flood hazard area.
Right.
The patch of that that shows that it does come on the property, I don't think it affects the ability to do pool.
Mm-hmm.
It requires some documentation.
Right.
And whatever that documentation ends up being, the engineering property will be asking for it.
Right. Would it be a permit by rule?
I think it would be.
Okay, so we, I could provide that, that's not a problem.
Just to address the DEP, the permit by rule criteria, the patch of floodwaters.
Right.
Some exercise.
Yes, yes, I would provide that, right, mm-hmm. Number 10. The existing driveway, which they previously got a variance for, is roughly an inch over. The three feet was required and it's actually 2. roughly 8.6 feet, you know, that's from the construction, I guess. You know, sometime, I'm not, I have not confirmed if it's exactly. Sometimes, you know, the surveyor go out there and they stick a rod in the ground. I mean, could move, you know, an inch here and there, so...
Yeah, I wasn't so much pointing out that the setback is 2.9 instead of 3.
Mm-hmm.
It was more that the driveway is supposed to angle away from the propping line as it goes toward the rear of the property.
Okay.
And it should be more like 5, 6, or 7 feet by the time you get to the wing back.
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, it's a couple of feet.
Right.
Beyond where it's supposed to be.
Mm-hmm.
Because under the prior approval, the driveway was supposed to stay parallel to the house because the house is not exactly parallel to the property.
Right. Looks like they did it parallel to the property line, yeah.
Yeah, so it didn't, instead of staying parallel to the house and moving away from the property line as you got more closer to the backyard.
Right.
It stayed pretty much parallel to the property. So that, I mean, by making it conform, you're going to reduce the coverage.
Right.
But it is just slimmer.
Uh-huh. I mean, to remove...
But it would need some relief. If the board can amend the application to ask for an amendment to that prior setback variance to allow for what exists now or comply with it and at the same time...
Yeah, just saw cutting, like, you know, less than an inch is very...
Well, no, it's a good couple of feet. I mean, by the time you get to the back, it's, so I don't know what it's exactly. The overall length of, it's over 100 square feet for sure.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, like I said, it also takes up some coverage.
The angle is over 100 square feet? The fact that it...
The length of it...
Yes, oh, okay.
It is...
Is 100?
Yeah, and it starts as like, it's complying, it's 2.0, but it goes up to 2 or 3 feet. So on a scale of it. And I don't know, I mean, there's some, the landscaping, it looks pretty solid over there.
Yes, yes.
I don't know that, I mean, is that growing over the other driveway anyway?
Yeah, it's like, it's way over.
So you're not going to miss that. It's just a matter of, if you can remove the pavement.
It's hard for them to get in there.
That's what I mean. If you can do it without damaging the trees, that would be what I'd be more concerned about because you're not losing any functionality.
Ripping the driveway?
Yeah, it's better to amend it because how are we going to, like, they would literally have to...
Well, I don't know exactly what it looks like there, but it looks like it has some stench.
It's intense. The trees are ginormous now.
So here's kind of your two options. Either you request the variance to permit what's there now or you comply with what was the 2015 approval, which would require you to move part of the... I'd request the variance.
Yeah, I think we appreciate it.
Well, there's no guarantee you're going to get it, but that's...
Those trees are ginormous.
So he's going to request it.
Taking over everything.
We'll note that.
Okay.
Okay, so he's going to request that variance to not comply with the former stipulation, I guess, for part of the resolution.
It would, I would characterize it as a new variance to permit the setback to be as little as 2.9 feet as shown on the survey.
Okay.
And that, of course, you say that it kind of subsumes the fact that you're kind of modifying that prior condition to make it move.
Okay. But in our, in our calculations here, the coverage already includes the driveway as it is now?
Yes, yes.
You have that one?
Okay. Number 11. If we're going to propose lighting, it's going to be all downward-facing light. Number 12. We'll comply to that. And number 13, we'll utilize the best management practice.
I think you're complying with pretty much everything except, well, number 10's kind of a...
Yes, that's correct.
All the other conditions are complying.
Okay, and did you receive a copy? Anything else, Mr. Schley? Are you comfortable with what's covered? Mr. Quinn, did you get a copy of Mr. Quinn's memo as well?
Yes, I have, yep, mm-hmm.
I could go through a quick...
Okay.
Item number one, we call it back with this stuff. It doesn't matter. I noticed on your claim, you didn't include the deck because it's covered. Some reason the surveyor did, but it's a moot point.
Right, I mean, it does have gaps and everything, yeah, mm-hmm. Right, mm-hmm.
I don't know why I added, I see your void ratio here at .3.
Yes.
Item 3 seems to be okay. You're basically, since the project results in an excess of 1,607 square feet of the order, 800 square feet of which is pool surface, you're basically covering all of the hardscape, all of the impervious coverage.
That's correct.
So I'm satisfied with that. I did want to say, since we're in variance territory, it looks like all over the world, you're going to want to connect a walkway to that pool.
You know, actually, we did discuss that and they actually don't want it.
Not put it near any trees or like...
Yeah, they don't, they don't like it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you don't get into a case where you creepie stand.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I did ask him, they don't...
I want to ask that question, too, is, is it, and I couldn't tell from the pictures or from the overview we have, is, I pulled up a Google map just to see, is it that there's trees right behind your house and then your, the open spot is that area?
There's like trees right behind our house and then it's all...
I do have, I do have...
It's all open, like paths. There's like three big trees and then...
These are new pictures?
One more picture, yes. Okay. How many others? Is there 30?
Two, two. This is, this is actually a landscape plan, which they have planned it all.
We'll come back to that. So how would you get from the, I guess, the patio or the deck?
You just have a deck.
So you walk from the deck to the...
So you would go to the deck downstairs and then...
And just on the grass?
On the grass.
That's a fair question. We respect about that a bit.
Everybody wants patio.
On the grass, we don't want stones, not that much. That would be a long patio in the backyard.
Here's Mark's notebook.
Yes, you can.
So Mark, these, as a companion to exhibit A two, these are two grayscale photographs of the property's rear yard, based on the testimony of the applicant. What were these photographs taken?
Today.
Okay, today. So they're dated today.
Just in case.
Should I finish up the document?
Yes, please.
So, you're helping Ezekiel, you need to do the soil check.
Yes, yes, mhm.
Because you're a whole lot of pressure.
Right.
When you do long inlets, I usually recommend you go with the deep ones, so they don't heave.
That's, that's.
Because then lip is above the surface.
Sure.
So two feet with like a six inch bed would be good.
Yes.
Also, one inlet for these two swales, I was a little uncomfortable for, I wanted to add another inlet maybe along this way up, so we have two points of capture.
Sure, I, we don't have a problem with that.
I didn't know what this, what is this, is this a hot tub, or is this a?
It's a spa, yes, it's a spa, yeah, mhm, yeah, just didn't call it out.
But it's got a cover, so it's, it's impervious cover like the patio, it's not like the pool, it's.
Well, no. No, it's, it's built in, it's built in.
Oh, it's part of the pool.
It's gonna be the same level at the pool, so, yeah.
Dave already talked about the potential flood hazard area that might be on the track. Also, S, soil conservation issue.
Right, we're gonna go, we're gonna go apply for that.
And that's all I have, unless you have any problems with any of this.
Uh, no, I don't.
All right, so you're gonna comply with everything, Mr. Quinn's.
Yes.
Okay, and then, did you also receive a copy of the environmental commission?
Yes, I have.
As you mentioned, real quick, before we begin the E C report, Mr. Cheng also gave sort of this as an exhibit, so the exhibit A three is a landscaping plan dated July twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
Oh, this is new?
Yes, he just obtained that, those are the photos, but I wanna take a moment.
Missed that one.
No, you're good.
We put in a whole bunch of trees for privacy.
And that's what exists on the property.
Yeah, it's, we put it in twenty-twenty, but it was after our, you know, renovation. It's about trees, yeah.
You got the park behind you.
Yeah.
Yes, the park is behind, yes.
And then driveway.
It faces outside. What?
The driveway next to your property, right?
Yeah, it's into the park. So just for some privacy.
Look, Mr. Cheng, do you have a copy of E C memo?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll take it away.
Um.
So comment one, the request that you guys revise the plans to show the area disturbance.
Yes, as part of the soil conservation district submission, one, two, and three are all gonna be shown on those plans.
Okay. Will be complied with in one way or in one another. You guys employ stormwater best management practices during site work?
Mhm.
Make a good faith best effort, are you guys planning any additional landscaping?
No, they, there's substantial planting as per that landscape plan already.
Not seeing too much of a jump at that, so we can go ahead and render that one moot, not comply with that one. Utilize best management practices when discharging pool water?
Yes.
Okay, and they also want you to be, the E C wants you to beware of potential for in-ground tanks, lead paint, and asbestos. And they want you to take proper precautions during demolition, do you encounter any of those? Will you take those precautions?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's E C memo, and then no, no trees are being.
No, no trees being.
Are there questions from the board?
Did you ask the neighbors?
I didn't.
Did you talk to your neighbors about the project?
I know we said that.
No.
No one approached you.
No one reached out to you.
No one approached you with the certified veil that they got?
They might be some good friends.
We probably will hear from them, yes. Okay, okay. Any questions from the public? Are there any, go ahead. Yes, are there any comments from the public on this application, either for or against it? No, seeing none, okay, anything else for us?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have, any stipulations to talk about?
Uh, yeah, I can hit them real quickly.
Yeah, why don't you hit them?
Yeah, okay, so I'll get it, go for the variances first. Two variances being sought here, guys, lot coverage, they're proposing eighteen point five eight percent, where fifteen percent is permitted. And then the other one is a driveway setback, that's to permit the existing condition, which is at closest two point nine feet from the, is that the northerly side yard?
Yes.
Yes, so those are the two variances, as far as conditions go. Everything in Mr. Schley's memo from January thirty-first, everything in Mr. Quinn's memo from February third, and pretty much everything in the environmental commission memo, except the condition that they plant trees and shrubs, as it looks like they have pretty sufficient landscaping already. And I didn't note any other additional conditions beyond what was contained in those memos. So that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you. And the eighteen point five eight percent that you're asking for, you're comfortable with that number, it's a very specific number.
Um, we just, it's just by moving the sheds down, you know, so.
You know, eighteen point five nine, when you ask for eighteen point five eight, doesn't work, so.
Right. Yes.
That's the number, okay.
Should we round up?
We won't round up.
Well, yeah. Okay, does anybody wanna kick it off with any comments here or motions?
So I think this is fairly straightforward. I, I think that, I, I like the fact that, I always consider the fact that the pool also captures some of the water. So even at the eighteen and a half percent, I still feel as though you have a little bit of leeway.
Yeah.
And you're covering the additional stormwater runoff with a, with a management system. So we really do appreciate when you look at that. In my opinion, I don't see any hardship here, but I see that there's no detriment whatsoever in this plan. I do think that it improves your house and the, the enjoyability. I don't think it's going to impact any neighbors, I think you're well screened, and you have open land behind your house. So I, I really don't, I, I see no issue, I see no detriment, I would see this under, C one for the driveway, there would be a hardship to remove that portion of the driveway.
But they kinda did it themselves, well, it's hard, you know.
Somewhat of a solitary.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the C two on that one.
Did they do it, or was it?
No, but.
Pre-existing?
Yeah.
Wait, I thought it was the twenty fifteen approval, was it not, I mean, they did it.
Yeah, oh, they did it, sorry. I take that, then I would take that back.
Okay.
But I don't see any, I don't see any detriment to it, so I, I see this under a C two variance.
Okay, thank you.
That's my thought.
That is a motion. Is there a second on that motion?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Oh.
I thought you were gonna make a motion.
No, I was just giving comments, but I would deem the application complete. I would ask our attorney to draft a resolution memorializing our approval of the application with all of the conditions and stipulations from the applicant.
I will second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baumann and Ms. Paktar.
Dr. Argwall.
Yes.
Ms. Baumann.
Yes.
Dr. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Pedici.
Yes.
Ms. Paktar.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Chairwoman Jenaers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, next up on the agenda is nine A, which is the Pingree Corporation, ZB two four zero two four.
Chair, going around to, I would, I would be the applicant's notice, it seemed to be sufficient both in terms of its content, timeliness of service, sent by certified mail on January eighteenth, and published in the Verdas of the News on January twenty-fourth. Thus, my legal opinion, the board is jurisdiction to here decide the case. Apology counsel, I can take it away.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Roger Maynor, Lynda Berry, McCormick, Estebrook, and Cooper. I represent the applicant, Pingree Corporation, better known as the Pingree School. What was just passed out by our engineer are the hard copies of the electronic exhibits that were sent to Mr. Schley. They were not part of the application package, but there's some additional exhibits that the engineer is gonna refer to and identify when we get there, so they will be marked in evidence as the hard copies in your file. I guess my first question is, we're pretty close to some of your witching hours here, so. So I know that you cut off absolutely at ten-thirty. We have three witnesses, one of whom, the first of whom is Mike Waltz, who's the facilities director at Pingree, he's fairly brief. But then we have our engineer and our planner, both of who are, you know, are gonna take more than ten minutes. So what is the board's schedule, because we are clearly gonna have to come back?
Yeah, I think, do you mean schedule beyond tonight?
Yes, because we are, we are not gonna finish, and I'm not a big fan of piecemeal applications, frankly.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I understand, we have to do it sometime.
Yeah, we can't manage, do the best we can, but you have until ten-thirty tonight, and then I would assume if you are not finished or close to finish, then we will carry it to a future date, and Ms. Kiefer would help us with that.
So what does the schedule look like?
Do you wanna start?
Tell us, yeah, we'll go ahead and start, but I'm just trying to get an idea. Like every applicant, we've got time constraints on our end, too.
Are you okay if we start and we do this after? Does it matter?
Whatever.
Or is it gonna affect like the?
No, I, because I think once I get through Mr. Waltz, I'm gonna stop, and I don't think he's gonna.
Okay, that's fine.
He's not gonna take till ten-thirty, I don't believe.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we do that, and Ms. Kiefer will be doing her.
So I think y'all know at least a little bit about the application, because we were here for the completeness hearing in December. But it's, the property's block eleven six oh one, lot three oh one. It's one large lot, that's the entire Pingree campus, all of its facilities are in one lot, it's a hundred and ninety-one plus acres. A great deal of the property is restricted from development in one way or another, a lot of it is steep slopes in the back, environmentally sensitive areas. There's really, what you see when you go into the campus is most of the developable area in the entire campus. There are some open spaces in the rear part of the campus, they're farmland, that's actually farmed. Some of the products are used in the cafeteria in Pingree. But Pingree manages its forests, its farmland, and tries to, to manage the whole campus, so. So what you see in the front is pretty much everything that's there. We were originally a permitted use in that zone many years ago, the R three, the definition's changed, the zoning changed, we are now a conditional use. And because we have a number of front yards, partially because we have a very small frontage on Sunset Lane, unfortunately, everything we have is in the front yard, all of our parking is in the front yard, all of our active recreation, all of our athletic facilities, everything is in the front yard. It's been that way, there's no place else to put it, we just, that's where it is, so we, we do.
Have you been in front of this board before?
Yes, many times, many, many times, I mean, one of the first things I worked on when I started practicing law was the construction of the original campus building back in the late seventies, early eighties, so. Learned more about sewage than I ever wanted to know. But this, this application is for reconfiguration, adjustment, improvement of two existing athletic fields. They're both grass fields, they both will continue to be grass fields, they are not lighted, they will not be lighted. One is the World Cup soccer field that was built in the nineties for the ninety-two, I believe, World Cup. Was a training site for, for Italy, it was a training site for the U.S. Women's National Team. And it's used, obviously, by Pingree and its athletic programs, there's an adjoining field, which currently has a baseball diamond on it and other uses. That will also be improved, expanded, adjusted somewhat in location, as you'll hear about, and made into a second soccer training field. It's a bit smaller than the first one, but we are, again, in a position to host training for the upcoming U.S. World Cup and some of the friendlies with the international club teams. Their standards have changed, those hundred million dollar guys in short pants don't run around just any old grass, you know. So they have, they have very strict standards, so we have a proposal to reconfigure those two fields to improve and expand a little bit of terrorist viewing area that we currently have, and to cover a small area of that viewing area to the rear of it, so we're calling it a pavilion, that's probably a pretty fancy term for a little covered patio or something. There are other related improvements, uh, the benches for the players, there's fencing, including some fencing that requires variances because it's higher than, especially because it's in the front yard, higher than the standards, but it's, a lot of it, it's all safety and security related, netting, so that's where baseballs, soccer balls, lacrosse balls don't impact anybody. We are also improving a third adjacent baseball field, just with new dugouts, since that will be used a little bit more for the baseball program, because we're eliminating one infield in one of the soccer fields. So we have several D three variances, I think Mr. Schley's done a great job sort of identifying them in his memo. And then we have the variances for fence height and so forth, which are more typical bulk variances. But we have an existing use that's not gonna change, there's no new programs coming in, there's no more students, no more anything. It's just an improvement, and the existing uses are gonna continue, it'll enable us to continue to host these visiting teams occasionally, and otherwise be used for our own educational and athletic programs.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How often are the, are the fields used for training?
For professional training? You're better off asking Mike that, when, once he's sworn, he's the facilities director, he could tell you. But it's not a weekly or daily or monthly basis, I mean, these, these teams come in for major tournaments like the World Cup, which we don't host all the time. And if you're a soccer fan, like I am, they come in the offseason in Europe to come over here and let their, and play friendlies with other teams, and let their, a lot of their second team players run around and charge a lot of money for people to watch them.
There were teams there this past summer, right?
Yeah, so they do, and they do then need training when they come to Giant Stadium particularly.
But is it, is it only off school hours?
Yeah, yeah, they're not, they are not there, they're not there when the students are there. I mean, obviously, if, if Italy comes back and trains for the World Cup, there are always volunteers from the student body in the summertime that come and, you know, pick up towels and get autographs and things. But they are not there during the school day, when the students are there, their training is at different times, and they, they have their own security. I mean, those guys, they're serious celebrities, those guys, and those teams, they have security, they, you know, they, and it's great. I mean, they spend money in hotels, they spend money in catering, they do, you know, they do bring some economic activity. But it's not a weekly or month, you know, it's a, it's a.
It's a timeframe, and it's usually when it's, when the kids are not in school.
Yeah.
And the practices, if they're training, is it, it's closed?
Yes, yeah, now, do friend, Pingree friends and family come and watch a little bit?
Yeah, I don't mean that.
Sure, but they don't allow the public in, oh, yeah, and they don't allow public in, they don't sell tickets.
Is there a speaker system, like, in this grand standard pavilion, is there?
Um, there is not, I don't believe, there are existing, if you look at the field, there's a scoreboard, which is gonna remain on, on the side, sort of more towards where the Pingree headmaster's house is. There's a scoreboard, that's got speakers for announcements in connection with games, that's gonna stay.
No change.
But that's not gonna change, no. No, and if there were speakers in the pavilion area or the seating area, they would actually be directed at the field, not to the rear where the, where the, you know, it'd just be for public address purposes, but, but that's been there, you know, for a long, long time.
So the only parking that would be needed would be for the people involved?
So the only parking that would be needed would be for the people involved in the training?
Yeah, this is not generating visitors or parking at any time that Pingree's parking is otherwise used by the school. So it's, yeah, so we're not in the middle of a school day in March bringing players in to train there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just a parking question. Is there anywhere else that you could create parking ever on that? I only asked because I've done it many times.
Yeah.
And it definitely, if there's multiple activities from school and, you know, people rent things, the fields and different, I've been there for indoor soccer.
It would be difficult, I think, to create much more parking. I mean, that's more of an engineering question than for me, probably. But, I mean, I think you'd start really eating more into the front yard. And, and, you know, we've purposely created a lot of berms and screening in the front so that the whole campus is a little protected from the street, you know, from the street view. But, you know, it would be difficult without starting to lose fields, probably, one of the other things. So that being said, there are three witnesses. Mike Waltz, Director of Facilities. We have Brian Ennis, who's a professional engineer with Bowler, who's our designer. And we have Paul Phillips, who's our planner, to, to wrap up testimony. We also have Michael Dwyer available for questions. I'm not going to put him on. He's a, with Bowler, he's a licensed landscape architect. So if there are any questions about the, any of the trees or landscaping, he can address them. So anything else, questions for me?
Do you want to just mark this whole thing as Exhibit A one? It's a three-page document.
Yeah, that would be fine.
That's just renderings, three-page rendering exhibit, I guess.
Okay, then I would call Mike Waltz, please.
And he's the Director of Facilities?
Yeah.
Yes, I.
Swear everybody in one sentence.
What was your last name, son?
Wells, W A E L Z.
Okay, so let's swear. Our board professionals, Mr. Wells. I don't know if you want to get your other two witnesses as well. Might as well just get everybody in one somewhere.
Okay.
In case nobody forgets next time.
Okay, so we have Brian Ennis and Paul Phillips.
Okay, all these swear, firm the testimony, your vows are provided. It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and they go the truth.
So my name is Mike Wells. I'm the Director of Facilities. Roger more or less said everything that I was going to speak about. I just want to reiterate, typically the teams come in the summer. We, this past year, we had a couple more teams. We had one at spring break. But pretty much annually, we have a team. It doesn't impact much of anything. The, the teams like coming here because they have privacy. They bring their own security, like Roger said, and it doesn't really impact the parking. And to your answer about parking, nobody wants to pay for parking, unfortunately. And it is a challenge. Everybody is always complaining about it. This really shouldn't impact that. When they come, they bring their own security. And once again, it doesn't, minimal impact on traffic, minimal on parking.
They're not open to the public, these training sessions?
Sometimes they'll open them on a day, maybe on a Saturday, usually just to the Pingree community. So it really, once again, it has very little impact, negative impact to, to the area.
But they don't sell tickets to this or any?
No, no, we never have.
Does our own police force provide security? I know you said they have their own security because our.
Well, both. We hire the, the local Bernard's PD.
So they're aware when they're coming in?
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. And I don't know, unless you have any other questions, I guess that just about covers it.
So I, I do want to understand, though, how, how is it, how is it not impacted? So are they coming on buses or?
Yeah, they'll come with buses. Typically, the state troopers will escort them in. So that we'll have them come in through the back. We have our own staffing to control, make sure that nobody else is coming in with them. So they're very well isolated. And the times when school is in session, it's that, that they have been there. The students barely even know they're there because the bus comes in through the back. They park, they get out, go on the field. The fields are in the back of the campus anyway, so it's really not viewable from anywhere unless you really try to make an attempt to get there.
Will there be equipment, uh, trucks, like, you know, when football teams travel, they have these huge equipment?
Yeah, and they'll have some.
Things that, you know, bring everything in for the players.
They'll have some.
Those, those will also be.
Yeah, they come in, but once again, it's, it's either off hours or it's, you know, they're really fairly quiet when they come in, which.
But their own security is at your gates, because I've seen them a couple times. It's a big deal when the teams are coming, coming through, you know. I think the town knows about it, and certainly with the World Cup, I would assume our town will even know more about it. And they do come on these, you know, big fancy coach buses with escorts that are, you know, police oriented. But they're, they're brought in right into the Pingree and then they just kind of disappear, right?
Correct, and we do, I mean, the typical security type measures where we monitor the gates and if the only people come in, they would have to have special ID.
Right.
It's pretty, pretty isolated, and we've got it down pretty good. It's.
I think it's similar to the hotels as well, when the teams are in hotels. Okay.
Currently, I guess there was one field that's been ripped up and I saw it recently. That field was available to rent or was it not available to rent? I heard it was a, it could be rental, but it was an expensive rental.
Yeah, we typically don't rent the World Cup field other than to the professional teams because our, we use it for our own teams, yeah.
And it's a grass field?
It's grass field.
The new one's going to be grass field also?
Correct.
And did the work start already?
We've done some of the demo work on the viewing area, so we've beat it up pretty good. We talked with Dave Schley to make sure that we were, we were allowed to do the demo, but that's, that's where we're at right now.
And Mike, there's no lighting associated with this at all?
Correct, no lighting.
If the teams are on the premises when the students are in session, is there security in the school?
Typically, no, just, I mean, once again, there's people outside. We just make sure. Sometimes the kids try to sneak out and look at the team and we, we don't really have a problem with that. But we keep everybody away from the, the field and the players. Some teams are more receptive to having fans than others. So sometimes they don't mind. Other times the coach will just, I had problems last year getting on the field and I maintain it. But that's just dependent on the field, on the team, rather.
So I should know this. The big tournament is, is in twenty-six?
Twenty-six, correct.
So is it, are you planning specifically like for the Italian team or do you think there will be multiple teams using it or, or you don't know?
Part of the reason we're putting the second field in is it would make us much more attractive. We're on the shortlist. We don't know, we won't know what team we get. We almost definitely will get a team. By having the second field, it increases the opportunity, like ideally, we'd like a top ten team. So, which, you know, the big boys come in and the second field is definitely going to help increase the odds.
So what's your anticipated date of completion of the project?
We have, this June, there's a, FIFA is holding on, I forget the, exactly what they call it, but it, there'll be club teams there. So we're trying to get a team for this June, so that's our. Yeah, exactly, the Club World Cup, that's it.
This project done for this June?
Correct. Yeah, it, it can go pretty quick once we get through some of the permitting issues, of course.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is, is the, the fields are used by students? Are they, they're only for World Cup teams?
No, they're used by students, absolutely, absolutely.
Only the top ten students.
You're correct. We do baby the fields a little bit, yes, absolutely.
It's going to be really good. You're going to be really good.
Yeah, we don't even like them walking on it because they'll bring infectious diseases in there.
More questions for Mr. Wells? Are there questions from the public? Okay, seeing none.
Thank you.
Okay, it's ten after ten. It's your, your choice.
We can start, Mr. Ennis, and at least get some of his engineering testimony.
Yeah, it's up to you.
I, I think farther we could be better off.
Okay, well, yeah, especially if you're looking for June of this year. Okay.
I gotta get my shovel out.
Great. Sorry, David, which folder should I click into? I just want to make sure I'm going to the right thing.
Well, I have all yours things in one.
Okay, they're all, okay.
Okay, all, all, like eleven pages?
I can sort them.
Do you want to just go to the, oh, wait a minute, that's the site plan.
Yeah, the other one, right? Yep, that one, perfect, perfect. I can go through my qualifications.
Brian, would you go through your educational background qualifications quickly?
Yes, I graduated from NJIT with a bachelor's in civil engineering. Been at Bowler Engineering for over thirteen years now. Our address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two oh seven in Red Bank, New Jersey. And my license is in good standing. I've been licensed for over ten years in New Jersey. And I've actually been in front of this board before and other boards throughout the state of New Jersey, so.
And that's a professional engineering license in New Jersey?
That's correct.
Okay, terrific. We will accept him as a professional engineer.
Great. So what you see here, we have A one already, correct, which is the ones in front of you. So I'm going to show some others. I do have paper copies afterwards, too.
Your entire.
Yes. Yes, so we're going to mark this one A two. What you're looking at on the screen is an overall site aerial exhibit by Bowler dated January thirtieth.
Do you want to mark the entire presentation as an exhibit?
We can do that, too, if that's easier or not. I'll just name the drawings as I reference them, just, okay. So Exhibit A two will be multiple drawings prepared by Bowler Engineering. And as I kind of pull them up and present them, I'll just give you specifics of what they are, what they're called.
And how many drawings?
Yeah, let me just make sure. There's eleven minus the three that the board has in front of them, just to make it a little confusing. So there's going to be. If you want to call A one, this entire package.
It's like a different format. We can just include the other three, so.
Okay, so A one will be a package of eleven and you have three of those in front.
A one is these three, A two is the presentation including.
Mine, okay, got it. Perfect.
Is this presentation different than what we have?
I have a few more, like the aerials and things like that. Those are the specific ones in terms of what we're going to share and pass out to the board. I do have boards and paper copies of them as well, too, so. So the drawing in front of you is overall site aerial exhibit by Bowler dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This shows the entire property, as was mentioned by Roger. North is to the top of the page and it's the entire Pingree campus. The address is one thirty-one Martinsville Road, block eleven six oh one, lot three point oh one. The lot size for the entire tract is approximately a hundred and ninety-one acres. And the total project area of interest, we'll call it, is about six point five acres, which I'll zoom into in a second. This is located in the residential R three district, where private school with recreational fields is a conditional use. As mentioned previously, we're before the board because there are conditions that are not met currently and as part of this proposed application. Adjacent users, we're surrounded by Martinsville Road to the east, Sunset Lane to the south, and numerous residential developments with parks and fields to the north. Going to the next sheet, this is the area of the interest aerial exhibit. And this is also prepared by Bowler and it is dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And just to kind of give a little bit more information, the overall campus has four hundred parking spaces, numerous fields and associated structures, buildings and other fields throughout the entire campus. And there's main access to the campus through multiple driveways on Martinsville Road. Even after the construction of this project, should it receive approval? The fields and structures that we are proposing are not closer than some of the existing fields and structures that are already on the campus, even though they do require their own relief specifically for their construction. There were a number of existing deviations that were previously approved for the campus, and I just wanted to kind of run through those so the board is aware and which ones we are also proposing as part of this application. There are, is parking in front yards, and maybe I'll just quickly refer back to the first sheet. As you can see, the front yard is defined as anything between the building and the right-of-way line. And you can see with my cursor, the majority of the fields and parking, as our attorney alluded to earlier, is located within the front yard already. No active recreation is allowed in the front yard or with seven, within seventy-five feet of property lines. And as you can see, there's numerous fields and things like that, especially along Martinsville Road that were previously approved and are in existing nonconformity. Recreation and parking areas are to be screened. There is a deviation for that in some of the fields. You can see the closest one, a field right off Martinsville Road, about twenty feet with no screening. Again, previously approved and part of the campus, not changing. There is a requirement for no outdoor activities after eight P M. There is no change to that operation, and as mentioned earlier, we aren't proposing any lights as part of this development. Accessory buildings and structures in the front yard, again, similar. A majority of the campus is front yard, as stated previously. So essentially, most of these structures and buildings are in the front yard. And also, as previously mentioned, maximum fence heights. We have up to twenty feet, which the majority of those fences are actually the screens, typically chain link fence for the first four to eight feet, and then mesh netting all the way up to twenty, just for balls and things like that, going from field to field. I'll now go back to the area of interest aerial exhibit. And the majority of the campus, and specifically to the north and west of the area you're looking at here, are surrounded by D E P jurisdictional areas, whether it be streams, wetlands, transition areas associated with the wetlands and things like that. I think we mentioned in the completeness, we did file for an L O I in twenty twenty-four. The D E P has still not made it to the site, so we are still awaiting for that L O I. But when we do receive it, if we do need D E P permitting, we certainly will acquire that as part of the approval process. I think we also mentioned it during the completeness hearing as well. We did have a previous L O I that expired, so there is a precedent set in terms of what the D E P has been looking at previously. It has been reflagged, resur surveyed, submitted as part of this application. And again, at the conclusion of that L O I, if we are disturbing any transition areas, which our intent is not to, we would be getting the proper D E P permitting. I would like to note that with the exception of some of the wooded area to the south that I'll get into for the grandstand, the wetlands, again, are to the north and the west of this area. And we're actually bringing the development in further from the wooded area, and you'll see that as I get to the proposed conditions. The existing field, just to kind of reiterate what Roger had mentioned previously, includes two baseball fields, one towards the north of the area interest and one in the southeast corner. In addition, there is the soccer field that currently exists and a soccer field that can be placed in center and right field of the second baseball field that's staying. All parking areas, fields and buildings not located within this area are to be untouched, as previously mentioned, with the exception of the driveway or the drive aisle, I should say, connecting the parking field to the back of the building. That is being reconstructed and relocated a little bit closer to the building for us to be able to fit the second soccer field and also corner that off, and you'll see that in the proposed conditions. So moving into the proposed conditions, this is the colorized site layout plan. So this is the same plan that the board has in the package, but it is colorized with the aerial dropped in for presentation purposes. And this is prepared by Bowler dated January thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And again, colorized with the landscaping superimposed for presentation purposes. And north, again, is to the top of the page. So just to visually show the board what we were looking at and describing previously, you see two fields. Two fields for the soccer and then to the south of the second field, which is the southernmost field, the grandstand area, which is what's in front of you with those exhibits. The two soccer fields and the two dugouts that are being added to the existing baseball field do require relief for recreation areas within the front yard or within seventy-five feet. And again, you can see they're actually further from the property lines and even Sunset Lane than some of the existing fields and field houses that are currently there. The northernmost soccer field will be three hundred thirty feet by two hundred ten feet. And pretty much the design throughout the entire two soccer fields, with the exception of the shared boundary in the middle, there is a ten-foot runoff area, is what we call it. Typically, you don't want any walls, fences, anything intruding within ten feet of the boundary lines because while the game is intended to stay within those, you'll have people going out of bounds and chasing balls and things like that. So we give a little bit of that safety area. The southernmost soccer field will be three forty-five feet by two hundred twenty-three feet with the same ten-foot runoff I mentioned earlier. This field, the southernmost field, again, will also have two player bench areas and what I'll, whoops. Will have two bench areas, and I'll, I'll zoom in and show you on the rendering, that are. that are covered for the players, and then also an area for the officials in the middle of those two bench areas, which is also covered. Um, and those are also set ten feet back from the boundary and in between the southernmost line of the southern field and the grandstand itself. Um, including, included in the construction of the fields will be some fences and walls that aren't associated with the grandstand, and I'll get into the grandstand in a little bit more detail later on. Um, and the northern field along the northwest and the northeast corners, there are proposed walls that are under eight feet in height. And as part of that northeast corner, you can see the reconstruction of the driveway, and it just gets a little bit closer to the building. And again, you could see how we're squared in, and what we were really trying to do is obviously stay out of the D E P jurisdictional area to the north and west, while also not impeding or impacting the wooded area to the south more than we have to. So we actually tried to condense the development, move that driveway closer to the building, and kinda keep our footprint where we can as best as possible, but also get that second field in. In addition, behind each of the four goals, there are some mix of either a six-foot chain link fence with a fourteen-foot mesh netting on top of it, or just twenty-foot mesh netting. And that's pretty typical, it's actually throughout the campus now, if you go out there, any goals, they have the fencing and netting behind it, so that if any ball is shot wide of the net or above the net, it's not going over to the baseball field if there happens to be a baseball game going on at the same time. Uh, the proposed grandstand with the pavilion will be further south, um, of the southernmost soccer field. And I'll get into a little bit more detail, some of the specifics of that design, after I kinda would just walk through the overall site. The proposed improvements also include the existing baseball field, which is located in the southeast corner of the, uh, exhibit that you're looking at currently. And as part of the improvements, we are removing the soccer, the baseball field that's in the northern portion or the northernmost soccer field, and making this one the new varsity baseball field. So that's why the dugouts are coming over. They're also doing a turf infield as part of this improvement to, um, kinda spruce up that baseball field at the same time as removing the other one. As mentioned previously, relief is being sought for the fence height. And just to go into specifics, the maximum permitted in a front yard is four feet. To, uh, the majority of the chain link fencing is six feet, and it's located basically along the walking path from the parking area to the pavilion. There's a six-foot chain link fence for fall protection with some of the grades, but also to separate the soccer from the baseball, as well as the six-foot chain link fence around some of the, uh, soccer fields, along with the netting that I was mentioning previously behind the goals. There is also an eight-foot chain link fence around the baseball field, and that is located between the dugouts and the field, and that is basically for safety of line drives and balls being hit on the baseball field itself. I would like to note that the four foot is required because it's in a front yard, and kinda the theme of what we've been talking about, everything's in the front yard. You won't see these fields or these fences from the right-of-way. And again, that Sunset Lane, that small piece of frontage, um, that isn't actually used for access or anything like that. And we're way further away from Martinsville, um, road compared to the majority of fields that you can even see on this diagram to the east. Due to the environmental constraints, again, uh, we did relocate that drive aisle, I just wanted to highlight that again. And as part of the improvements for the field, we have, while not changing the A D A spaces or any of the parking, we have included a pathway now that goes directly from the A D A spaces, as opposed to parking at the A D A, having to go through the drive aisle and then access the fields. There now is a sidewalk where my cursor is directly to the A D A spaces. Um, and someone can access the parking and the A D A through that path, circulate down south, um, to the southern field. And there is A D A access, which I believe was one of the board engineers' questions, from those spaces to the top of the pavilion. We can certainly provide more grading information to make sure all those slopes are met. And what we have done is the access now comes to the top of the pavilion, 'cause part of the problem is the existing grandstand that's there has access to the bottom. And typically, people just get there, stop, stand, and people that are actually trying to sit behind can't see the game. So the thought is giving it a little bit more of a grand entrance. You would enter from the rear of the grandstand, and kinda typical to stadium seating, we will have designated A D A areas at the top of the grandstand for anyone in a wheelchair or that can't go down further into the grandstand. Now I'm going to go to the three that you see in front of you, and these, we'll call them, uh, three D renderings, and they're grandstand perspective renderings, view one, two, and three, and I'll go through exactly which one shows. And these are basically three D renderings of what the final grandstand construction will hopefully look like. We have put also in the landscaping, you can see behind the grandstand. You can see in this one specifically, the player benches we were talking about on each side of the field, with the smaller officiating one in the middle. And those, again, are covered metal, uh, frames with plexiglass. And the look, as I'll go through the three you have in front of you, the first one was more of an aerial view. This one is almost as you're coming kinda down from the parking field, and you look to your right. This is what you would see for the grandstand. So you'd see the flag that is gonna be relocated, the pavilion at the top, which is going for like a natural look with some, with some stone base and, uh, wood frame. And then the grandstand itself would be, uh, stone look with, uh, block walls. And then the third view is the pavilion. So again, you won't have access to the seating area unless you go all the way to the top. And you kinda walk through, almost like a little bit of entrance. If you've been to the Pingree schools, they have a lot of areas with plaques and historical things, and, um, the intent is to be able to, whether it's Hall of Fame plaques or things like that, have some of those while you're entering the grandstand. And also, if there is bad weather, have some cover for people to stand up top, as opposed to maybe sitting in the rain. So I think it's a nice look, it almost gives it like an entrance into the grandstand, not fully constructing a stadium, but giving a little bit of that feel if you are going to a Pingree soccer game. The grandstand itself, and I'm gonna go back to the second view. The grandstand itself, just to give you a little bit of the specs and dimensions, will consist of six rows of seating, constructed as almost like a layered wall system, so it's not gonna be metal bleachers. It's gonna be almost like a tiered wall system, where people can actually sit on the walls themselves and not have an actual grandstand-type feel with the old-school metal bleachers. Um, as part of our variances that are being requested, we are requesting a variance for an eleven-foot tall wall, where only eight feet is permitted. That wall is essentially the front of the grandstand, and that's located next to the boundary line, but right behind the player seating area and the official seating area. And really, that eleven feet comes into play because those structures are about seven and a half to eight feet tall. And if we don't have a wall that's kinda raising the grandstand directly above that, you wouldn't actually be able to see over it. So the first wall is eleven feet, that gives you good visibility to the field, good visibility over the seating areas. And then from there, you would have six rows of tiered wall systems that are about a foot and a half each. So the first one will be eleven feet, you get above the seating area, you can see the second field. And then from there, you're only going up about a foot and a half, and it almost acts as the seating itself for the tiered system. So again, the variance is for eleven feet where eight feet is permitted.
May I just ask our professionals a question? The, the reason for the retaining wall height is really for the stability of the wall, correct?
I'm not sure, anything over four foot is just, is a wall that needs some sort of stability. I'm not sure why eight feet was limited. Normally, if they limit the height of a wall, it's because it's too close to the property line, they don't wanna fall on it. I don't know what the rationale was for the limiting that height.
I know, instead of the exceeding eight feet, you're allowed to just step it back a foot and then go up higher. Because I think it's one foot horizontal for four feet of vertical. So you could step it and have that wall for that one foot. I don't, I don't know if that's an engineering thing, I don't know, if it'd be a safety thing, something like.
So.
Stop you from falling the whole distance of the wall by just stepping it in, but.
So then my, my question would be really then, with everything that's sort of behind the wall, does this add to the stability of the wall so that we don't have to worry really about it falling over into something?
You won't have to worry about it.
Yeah, right?
The wall's gonna be designed by professional engineers, so you're not gonna have to worry about stability. Wall, eleven-foot walls are designed all the time, twenty, thirty-foot walls are designed all the time.
Right.
So it's not a question of stability, it's a question of, I think, aesthetics and look.
Okay.
Here, eleven-foot wall seems like it would be appropriate, given the conditions.
I think so, too, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, and even part of the thought process behind that was not only the visibility, but the quicker we can get up in terms of not tearing and pushing further back, it keeps more of the vegetation behind in the wooded area and not have to kinda catch up quicker or disturb more area to make up that grade.
So what is, uh, behind the front of the wall, is there a lot of soil?
Is there?
Lot of soil in front of the wall or behind the wall?
So what, what we're actually analyzing now, there's some geotech work going on, it's actually a lot of rock. So we're currently doing a geotechnical investigation of this hill now to see exactly what the stability of the rock itself is, and how we are gonna design, to your point, the stability of the wall, and the entire grandstand is being structurally designed. So not even just the front wall, we're designing the front wall and all the way to the back to make sure the stability is there.
My question was, uh, are you thinking of an incant landslide for the wall?
Uh, no, we're, basically, this is almost at a, at a high point. So we're gonna build it into the berm, and then it actually starts dipping back down into the wooded area. So we don't expect anything like that. And what we're actually proposing, I think, will actually provide better stability than there is today. Um, some of the dimensions for the grandstand, just to give you overall scale, um, from the front of the grandstand through the six rows to where the pavilion is, is about twenty-two and a half feet. So not a gigantic structure, but also getting as many seating areas and a nicer aesthetic look as we possibly can. From there, there's a six-foot viewing area at the top, and again, some of that area will be designated for A D A, um, spaces. And from that point, the pavilion will be about twenty-five feet for the, uh, shelter area, and then five feet behind that for sidewalk, which is accessing it into the pavilion.
What's the total seating?
This total seating. So our capacity is around four fifty, and that's based, yeah, and the existing area, just to give you scale, um, is about three eighty, and because if you've been to games, there's kind of just people everywhere, they're on the hills and things like that. So a lot of this is to focus that, make it a little bit safer, and bring the capacity more in a designed way as opposed to kinda people spread out throughout the area.
So wait, so the seating is four hundred fifty, but the additional area or the total capacity for the area you're saying?
The total capacity would be four fifty.
So that includes that grassy slope above the wall?
Yes, so we actually, as part of this, the grass areas are designed so you can access them and throw a blanket on the two grass areas, both to the, uh, east, I guess, and the west of the, uh, grandstand. So if you see in here, to your question, um, you can actually access this grass area and throw a blanket down, and that is factored into the capacity. So I went to capacity as opposed to seating, so just the total number of people that can fit in this area is about four fifty. And the people that we saw in terms of just areas where they were watching games was almost about three eighty. So I think you could see it's a bigger area and a lot more defined and designed for people watching the game as opposed to spread out wherever one, anyone's kinda just gonna throw a blanket and watch the game.
And, and what are the barriers on the sides, the safety barriers on the side of the, um, tiered wall?
So along the entire frontage, there's fall protection. So at the eleven-foot wall, there'll be basically a short fence or short, short railing to, for fall protection. And then going up and down the steps, we have railings as well.
And what's the most outer, outside of the rail?
Sorry, this area here, right? This is for fall protection as well. So it, it'll almost look like it'll be a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than the typical aluminum bleachers, but because of the grade difference of that grass area, it's a little bit more of a sturdy railing because people will lean on it and kind of watch the game from that spot as opposed to, um, the fall protection where it's just in case someone's falling off the wall.
Any concessions?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay.
All right.
Can you, can you actually get four hundred fifty people?
So that's basically the calculation of if we, and there's a whole methodology, which we can certainly, uh, present to the professionals, but the capacity would be based on separation of people typically for seating like this. And there's different equations that go into the grass area itself compared to the tiered walls of the seating. So that's where we kinda get the four fifty. And not to say that we're trying to get four fifty people, four hundred fifty people here. That calculation was more done to kinda show, hey, it's kind of existing now, but I think it's a lot more organized and designed for it as opposed to what's there currently.
How many parking facilities do you say there are?
Four hundred total, and as mentioned previously, this won't change in terms of people going there, what games are being played. It's more just a facility that can handle it better than it currently is today.
I think it's, you know, you have multiple facilities there, you have three or four or five soccer fields now.
Yes.
If you had games all at once, in all the fields, then it would be very chaotic in that, in the parking facilities.
Yeah, and it was alluded to earlier in terms of the cost of parking, but also the amount of area that it seems like it's not developable, but, or it seems like it is, but a lo, a majority of it is streams and wetlands and things like that. So in terms of adding more parking, it's something that I'm sure Pingree would love to do, it's just a very constrained site.
If we can do a parking lot, I mean, you'd have to go up on one of the parking.
Yep.
Are there, and this is probably from Mr. Walz, but, um, do you ever have occasions where all of the fields are in use at once?
We do, yeah, and it's a zoo. It is, no other way to put it. It's, uh, we try to get our, uh, facility staff to manage traffic control, but there, there's not much you can do. People park wherever they want at the end of the day, uh, when those days happen, unfortunately.
Do you have any, not, do you have any off-site parking that you can use besides the other soccer fields down the lot?
We have on occasion, like when we had a fireworks display, we've worked with some of the local commercial places to see if we, you know, they could take the overflow. But we really haven't used it, we've been managing enough parking in here, perfectly legally, of course.
With the, with the games, of course, people come for a game, then they leave, and not people come. So it doesn't necessarily be, those people aren't there all day, they're going back and working.
Exactly, it's a challenge.
Different areas.
It works.
Nobody's parking on the street, correct? Nobody's parking on the market, so.
No.
And for the big events, we hired, uh, Bernard's B D as well, which, uh, helps with traffic control, you know, for, for sanding.
Is this a good spot to stop?
It can be, yes.
Noting the time here.
Yep. I will just mark that so I remember where to pick up in the next meeting.
Well done, by the way.
Thank you.
Well presented.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I think Ms. Kiefer, we're gonna look for a date that we could carry the Pingree application.
I gave you a pending application list there. Can I give you one? Scheduled?
Yes.
I can tell you that on the, uh, March fifth date, that first application, Alma Harv, one oh six Meeker, that, that's not gonna happen.
On March fifth?
Pardon me?
The first one on March fifth?
Yes.
So is the suggestion to carry it to March fifth?
So would it be your suggestion to carry it to March fifth?
That would be my suggestion.
Pingree, does March fifth work for you? Next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, our, uh, deadline to act on this is, uh, May eighth, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Maney? Mark? The deadline for the board to act is, is May eighth, so we have plenty of time.
Yeah, we're happy to give you whatever waiver of that.
Yeah, I don't think we need any at this point, just.
Don't want you losing any sleep over that.
We had our application hearing, uh, back in January.
Yeah, yeah.
So we've got a significant amount of time.
I'm just checking, just.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and you have, um, one more witness?
Yes.
After we finish this testimony?
Yeah, we have our planner, Phil Phillips. Hey, Margaret, I think you have questions.
If, if we have questions, okay.
I won't put them on unless you.
All right, thank you.
So it's carried out?
Yeah, we'll make the formal notes from out of chair. Okay, so this application of the Pingree Corp, Pingree Corporation, AKA the Pingree School, is gonna be carried to the board's, uh, March fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. No further notice will be required, either by publication or by mail or personal service. Uh, seven thirty P M, it'll pick, we'll pick it back up right here in the municipal building, so.
See you then, thank you very much.
So we will see that, thank you.
See you then.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, any, uh, comments from members? Any comments from, well, actually, I'll make a, I'll make a comment. I just wanna, um, thank Mr. Ted Creedley, he's not here tonight, but, uh, he was terrific to have on the board and did, uh, a lot of work over the last several years. So I just wanna thank him, um, for his service.
Yeah, he will be missed.
Yes, he for sure is gonna be missed, but he is going on to do even more, I think, for our town, which is terrific. Um, and I think we are near getting, um, one new member and hopefully two new members, uh, shortly, so.
I wanted to tell you, I will not be available for the meeting, uh, in March.
Okay.
I will be skiing Colorado. Because I did it last year, and I figured, since I made it last year, I might as well try it again. It's actually my birthday, that's why I go there.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I will have reports obviously before, I look to you. If I can jump on for that day, I'll have reports.
I will have reports obviously before. I look the year ahead. If I'm on for that day, I'll have reports. Coordinate that a day.
Okay.
If you really want, I can try to get someone to sit here. I just, I don't know that the applicants warrant that.
Okay. And how about for the Pingree application? Do you have any specific concerns there that you think you should have a...
No, no, no. I did call and speak with Mr. Dennis there, who is the one over small order to bring, he agrees with me.
Okay.
To be honest, I think that is kind of a piecemeal submission. There's a lot of things that were not sorted out yet, so I think the infrastructure they have there for small order is sufficient, but the rationale for it is loose. So I just wanted to tie that up. So I already explained to him, he's on board with all of those things that I...
Okay. So when the board has a chance to review the other two applications and think a little bit more about Pingree, obviously we can reach out to you before the meeting and once we're more informed, we'll have a better idea on whether we think we're good without you or not.
Right. And I'll have reports for the application.
Yes, for sure. Okay, that would be helpful. And, and you'll be available until when?
Today.
What date are you leaving?
I will go on the 4th through the 11th.
Okay, so we'll have the reports before then and if people want to give you a call, they can. Thank you. Good luck and be safe. Any other comments from staff?
I wish I had some.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, motion to adjourn?